Going to go ahead and start the meeting at five oh six. Um, can I get someone to uh accept the agenda, please? Jacob is going to uh accept the agenda and Jess, do you want to make second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Barbara, can you say aye?
Barbara's behind your books.
Oh, there you go.
Still driving, so.
That's okay.
Sorry. Well, you're you make our quorum, so we appreciate you jumping on. Okay, communications with parents, citizens and staff. And no one is here to talk to us. I have not received any let's talk communications for RNESU. So um good, bad or indifferent, we're going to continue moving on. Um consent agenda. Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda, uh or actually I need someone to make a motion.
I think we sent you an addition to the consent agenda today.
You did, for the job description.
For the job, one job description, good, okay.
Yep. So if someone could make a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, Jacob and then a second.
I'll second.
Okay, Jessica is seconding. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Perfect, thank you, consent agenda.
So Kristin, you now are officially exited.
But you're still here till June thirty. And then we'll we'll keep you after that, too. Alright. Um superintendent report.
Uh well, the primary thing is um that we did do the pre-K lottery. You had asked me to have it done by this meeting. We had eleven people apply. One of those people actually was the three-year-old going into the four-year-old program. So we already knew for education consistency that they would stay. Another one of those people was actually asking for an in-district program. So there were nine valid names and we accepted four more after the three to four-year-old. So there are five remaining on the waitlist. Uh Melinda either has or is in the process today of notifying families. And that's primarily it. Um Kristin is here tonight to present on curriculum. The curriculum department is part of our checking in on your ends, which is looking at each of the departments and how we're doing.
Great.
Supporting schools.
Um any questions for Jean on her superintendent's report? Okay, well then we're gonna
Recording in progress.
We're gonna continue on. Um well, talking about that presentation by Kristin. Um if you're ready to do so, Kristin, it the floor is yours.
Sure. Um I need to uh give the mic.
Yes, you do. Uh she will.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, you should have it.
Excellent. Okay.
Oh, sorry, guys. You guys are close enough to see it.
Yeah, we're fine, we're good.
Okay, good, thank you.
And I did, um Jean, you got it, right?
Yes, I do.
You and Melinda?
Yes.
Okay, so um thank you for having me this evening. I won't pick up too much of your friends. Just want to talk to you a little bit about who we are as the Department of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment and what some of the uh big things are that cross our plate this year and broadly speaking uh in general. So um we we basically operate under the the following guiding principles. That no matter what's happening in the world around us, um we need continuity of instruction as a major priority. Keeping students at the center, ensuring access and equity, high-quality instruction, communicating with stakeholders such as faculty, families, teachers and support staff, and ensuring flexibility to meet the needs and advocate for all students while maintaining SU priorities and standards. So no matter what initiative or what project we're working on, we try to stay true to these guiding principles. The core team is myself, um my fantastic assistant Jess Morris David, a team of instructional coaches and interventionists around the SU, RNESU, OVA and Barstow. And we do have an incoming director of curriculum Tyler Weedeman who will pick up the charge. Um when we think about curricular co-caring, which is driven by Act one seventy-three in Vermont, but also it's, you know, what drives the curriculum department in general. Um we try to really work and operate with an articulated philosophy at the center. And that's basically that we want to make sure that no matter what we're doing, we're attending high-quality standards aligned with common instructional resources, that we really believe in professional learning and collaboration, that we strive for a balanced system of assessment and that we really have evidence-based instructional practices. Um so everyone from central office to building leaders, to coaches, to interventionists, to principals are really, um every time they cross paths with the curriculum instruction assessment department, I will try to make sure that this is overly clear. Um and some of the the questions that guide our work, especially in relation to the pandemic and adjusted school requirement, um but broadly speaking in terms of this is just best practice, is really making sure that we're clear on language, making sure that everyone understands the difference between standards, right, or proficiencies, curriculum and instructional needs. A lot of times those those phrases are used interchangeably and they are just not the same today. Um we also want to get real specific about when the state requires us to have a guaranteed viable curriculum. What does that mean for us? And how do standards, curriculum and instructional resources work together to help create equity for all students? Uh the core team, as I mentioned, we have um a slew of coaches. Uh we have seven this year. We will drop down to six next year. We have instructional coaches, proficiency-based learning coach, um technology integration, equity and engagement, MTSS, which is the multi-tiered systematic support, and data literacy. A few of the coaches will be um presenting through the OVA later this evening. Um at the K to eight level, we have a variety of academic interventionists. In Lowthrup, we have two, um so they serve K to six, ELA in math. We have one unfilled. Stat shortages have hit the convention department pretty significantly this year. Um OCA has one interventionist. One position remains unfilled. Nationality has seven interventionists. Um six FTE, we have two who job share. Um and Barstow has two interventionists. Otter Valley has five that support the seven twelve program. Two are specific to seven eight, so they have one math, one ELA. Um and then the other three are uh uh two are for nine twelve ELA in math and one is a seven twelve writing center. Um interesting to know and will likely hear um a bit about it next year when we ran the new administration. We're shifting next year probably um for the systemic support and how the interventionists function. Um seven eight will remain a pull-out math or reading support, but nine twelve is going to move to a scheduled course or lab. Um so in a three-bought incentive, uh students that are struggling with math or reading will be able to get a scheduled intervention block um that won't take away many of their core classes and they will also earn a half a credit for that intervention. So kind of an incentive for students who show up, take it seriously, um and uh you know, progress. Um the the guiding principles principles of our work again is that we want to make sure that we're connecting the work of our classroom teachers to that published, that guaranteed viable curriculum, to all of the resources that they need. We make sure that when we talk about curriculum, we're talking about all of the pedagogy, all of the learning experiences, the resources, the assessment. Curriculum is that large overarching um you know, belief. We also really want to make sure that we address how learning experiences are designed at the local and SU level. We know that there are differences between our schools, our grade levels, and we need to make sure that we intend to that and that we ultimately translate those standards into, again, that curriculum that isn't a secret, right? Teachers know what's happening, principals know what happens, what's happening. But the big one is that students and families ultimately know um what the learning experience looks like. Instructional guiding principles are pretty similar. Um we want to make sure that the teachers have what they need to be able to implement their curriculum. We really make sure that um our schools each have enough instructional time to be able to develop the essential knowledge, skills and concepts. Again, we want all students reading at grade level at the end of second grade. Well, they need to make sure that they minimally have at least nine minutes of English learning charge a day, right? So some of those things. We ensure that they have enough instructional time. Um we also pay attention to academic rigor. Um and then we focus on learner expertise, teacher expertise and also admin expertise. We want to make sure the right things are happening in the classroom. Um teachers need to know what that looks like and so do principals who are supervising our staff. Um and then assessment guiding principles. Um and this was a huge focus for us this year. This was was a huge focus because the state is looking at accountability in a really different way. And then we know that some of our schools also with reference to the mandatory state assessment didn't reach their participation totals. Um so we've really focused in on our assessment system. Um I just reported to Jean earlier today, two of our schools have already hit a hundred percent completion for all state assessments. So that's a really exciting move. And then we're focusing on the other schools still who still have until the end of May. Um so we make sure that all of our schools are trained, um that all of our local results are made available on a timely banner. Um so beyond our state assessments, what are we doing at the local level? Uh so teachers can make a shift. Um we focused really heavily this year on test security protocols. Um we know that the last couple of years, because we've had so many students remote, um the security has been an issue. Um you know, even we know that right now at the high schools, students will be getting, for instance, advanced placement test. Um you know, there is a very real possibility with so much available to students remotely um that plagiarism and things like that are potentially issues. So me, along with a lot of schools around the region, have been focusing on those test security protocols and also accommodations um for students who need those. And then just something for you to know, as Act one seventy-three continues to be a focus, a big thing for RNESU is our comprehensive assessment plan. And we're we're constantly refining that. Um and that's just an indicator or a a snapshot of what the common assess comprehensive assessment system looks like. Um I know we've talked about this before. Um but we do have, as a part of that, because it's required, obviously, our state testing and our diagnostic assessment, which are edmentum, um but we rely most heavily on all of the other things, right? We rely most heavily on our in-in-class, informal and formal and summative assessment that guide what's happening to student, what we report out on parents and also the instructional decisions that teacher teachers. Um we talked about performance, social, emotional health and learning is also a big part of what we do in that department. Um it it's got a lot of press lately, but social emotional learning is not new. Um teachers have been for decades uh doing responsive classroom morning meetings, working to build community, making sure that students understand their role as a part of a classroom community. Uh so that work continues. Um it's just gotten a little bit tighter. Um so we work to support the really diverse needs, um mental, behavioral, social, emotional. Um counselors and teachers work in all groups, one-on-one, and a whole class can be able to support student. Um and again, I I talked a lot about the multi-tiered system of supports. This is required um of us by law. It shows up in the ed quality standards and also Act one seventy-three. Um but we know it's the best practice, right? We know that it's important that we support all of our students, both academically and socially emotionally. Um so we have a pretty um well-defined system. We continue to refine it and revamp it. I would say the most work going into next year continues to be at the middle and high school. We know it, we're ready for it. We have some good plans in place. Um and a lot of it has to do with that referral system that catches students when they're struggling, how we identify those students and then how we ultimately provide more targeted support. Um you know, regardless of what area of need students have. To do all of the work on curriculum, it's not just myself, um the coaches and the interventionists. It's really everyone in the school. There's very few people, uh because we lead the early release PLC. Um everyone crosses paths with my department, um from um again administrators to support staff. We work very closely with school counselors, school psychologists, um all administrators, teachers, specialists, other related service providers. And this year more than ever, and hopefully continuing in the future, students and family as well. Um the other beauty big thing that crosses my desk and um my calendar for the year is staff professional development. Uh so we are, our department is in charge of, kind of loosely speaking, all SU-wide professional development, um all SU-wide professional learning communities, those early release PLCs. And we tend to have a hand in building-based in-service and faculty meetings as well. So there are often times where administrators say, I need this support. And I'll send a coach out to, for instance, be able to talk about PDIS and some BKA meetings. Um coming up next for next year, just so you're all aware, big focus areas for us continue to be trauma-sensitive practices, social, emotional learning and equity. Um again, MTSS and universal design for learning. Uh so UDL is really what happened in the general mainstream classroom. Um if a student needs more support or something different, they may refer a student out for support, but that doesn't mean in their classroom, they still don't have a responsibility to do everything they can to differentiate and and meet the needs of those those learners. So that's basically kind of a loose definition of of universal design for learning. We will also continue focusing on data literacy and proficiency-based teaching assess assessing. And we know, um because the pandemic has made us be much more responsive to technology integration and best practices. Um we know that this is continues to be a big focus for us. And coming soon, again, there's that Tyler Weedeman. He will be joining um Marcia Bruce and I tomorrow, actually, at the incoming superintendent curriculum director and special ed director conference. So very excited to welcome Tyler. Um and then coming up, we have a two-year curriculum action plan. A draft is complete. Uh we're going to roll that out for implementation in the fall. We will share that with you um coming back in school. Um some of the pieces that show up in our action plan are the implementation of a district curriculum governance team. Um so that group will both oversee curricular changes and make sure that we have a regular curriculum review cycle going. Um also, we're going to really focus on extended learning opportunities and flexible pathways. COVID has illuminated a lot of areas of opportunity. Um and although a lot of students were not successful with remote learning, we do know that there's this discrete portion of the population that has done really well with that. So where are our opportunities and flexible pathways? Um again, a revamp assessment and coordinated curriculum plan focusing on rigor um and also a wide variety of opportunities for students. Um Marcia Bruce and I are working together on a district curriculum accommodation plan for Act one seventy-three. That's a lot of words. We call it the D cap. Um and it's basically, we know that Act one seventy-three is coming from the state. So this is all of the pieces that we need across departments to make that successful. Um Marcia and my dir- my department has the most correct cutters for that piece of legislation. And then again, um the updated professional learning, um professional development and the tools and practices that happen. So those are our big things. And I will stop.
And for you, Becky and?
Becky and Brenda both.
Brenda Fleming.
Yep.
Okay, Tyler, was he on?
No, he was not.
Thank you, Kristin. No, he's just a picture.
Weedeman. W I E D.
No, E I D E. Thank you, Kristin. And I will forward that presentation onto all of you.
I had a question.
Yeah.
But um now I can't remember. You just illuminated it and um I was wondering if it would continue. Oh, the online, so for those kids this year that wanted to do complete online, are we doing that again next year or are we we de- we that's where we're doing a lot more of the flexible pathways instead? Yes?
Do you want me to answer Jean or do you?
Yeah, go ahead, Kristin.
Uh yeah, so we are, and I just had a couple of these questions uh from parents today. Uh so we currently have a coordinator who oversees that, keep having conversations and regular meetings with families. So they're very aware um that the program that we have right now, which is through edmentum, is not an option next year. What we will have is again, a big focus on flexible learning and um alternative pathways for students. We have a variety of seats and we have an OVA teacher, Lisa King, who partners with BTVLC. Um so that will continue to be an option for students at the the really the high school level. Um but Lisa and I are working um currently on figuring out how we, we don't use all of our seats, basically. So figuring out how we can can create an application process to be able to open up seats potentially to some elementary students that they are really, really interested in being able to keep it going. The difference between BTVLC and edmentum is for edmentum, we have a staff member that oversees it, but they have edmentum teachers and students can they can log on at any point during the day, the night. That type of program works for students who, for instance, have jobs or doing other things. BTVLC is a little bit more strict. Um and for elementary students, the program is basically eight to three. They would have to be logged on. So we saw some homework to do, but we are committed to figuring out flexible pathways options for as many families and students as we can.
And right now, I know I reported out in the previous report, but maybe two dozen kids or roughly or so? Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kristin?
That was great. It seems like you uh made concise a huge amount of work that you do.
She did.
Jean said I could only talk for ten minutes.
And Charlene said, wow, she talks fast.
It's all in the presentation. Just read the presentation.
Alright, well, thank you for that. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, we're going to move on to our monitoring report.
I'm wondering if you would, if if the board might consider moving to what?
Governance process.
The bus bid?
Sure.
Because it's Brenda's birthday. Happy birthday, Brenda.
Happy birthday, Brenda.
If we could um do her piece first and let her go.
Sure.
And Brenda, you are here for, we already approved the voucher, the food, right?
Yeah, that was on consent agenda. So we've already done the thing.
Yeah, the fee and service contract is already approved. It's the bus bid and I think that's all you're needed for, is that right?
That's all I needed for unless you had any questions about the policy for the non-union support personnel.
Yeah, maybe that one too. So what, i- is that okay if we?
Sure. So why don't we head to the, why don't we do the bus bid first? Um so um that was in our packet. It looks like um we are looking to buy three buses. Um we usually get three bids from the three different New England um sales reps, although Anderson did not bid this year. Um Brenda is recommending that we go with WC Cressy, who is the low bid at a hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars per bus. However, we do have a problem as the Department of Education uh requires that we receive three bids. And because Anderson didn't bid, that creates a problem where we need to request a waiver from the AOE um indicating why uh we don't have the three bids. So it looks like you've pretty much already done that, Brenda?
Have.
Okay, and so at this point, I would entertain a motion.
Which is written on the agenda.
Which I was just going to mention that. Uh the motion that is on our agenda, if someone wants to make that motion.
I'll make it.
Okay, so Jacob just made the motion to accept the WC Cressy bus bid for three buses in the amount of three hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and forty-one and authorize the superintendent and bus manager, or business manager, sorry, not bus manager, um to sign any documentation necessary for the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Becky is seconding. Um is there any discussion? Did Anderson indicate any reason why they wouldn't bid or they just said, oh, you had said that down here? It was that they didn't have the resources or to to actually bid, is that?
Yeah, they are looking at um supply chain uh or supply chain delivery.
Okay.
That doesn't sound right. But and they are also looking at new buses coming in and they didn't, um they're just not in a place to bid.
Okay, and we like WC Cressy just mainly because that's who we've, that's who we've dealt with for the past. I don't even know how many years.
Yes, and um it means that we have all the same uh bus fleet, the the same make. They're all freight liners.
Okay. Great. Any other discussion for Brenda? No? Okay, so all those in favor of the motion to buy three buses in the amount of three hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars from WC Cressy, please indicate by signifying by saying aye. Perfect. Alright, that's unanimous. Okay, and then um we were going to talk about the RNESU policy for action. It is the first reading. It is policy GD um slash R, which is non-union support personnel terms and conditions of employment. Um it is a revision. Um hopefully everybody had a chance to look at it. If someone wants to make a motion to accept, then we can discuss. Oh, Jacob is making the motion to accept. Is there a second? Looks like Barbara is making a s- because her little green thing is on. Go with it. Alright, so um discussion regarding this policy. Looked like mainly wordsmithing. I did see one
It is.
major change that um you no longer need a board member to sign personnel contracts.
Yeah, did we write that in there?
You did.
Okay. That's because we're going to electronic contracts. I don't find them either.
Yeah.
Um yeah, so in the superintendent's report, I I prioritized or highlighted what the major changes are. We're moving to timesheets um for the non-union personnel. It's it's part of the negotiations proposal in front of the union support staff and that is public negotiation, so I could say that. The teachers' contract settled on health insurance language that changes to reflect what's happening at the state level. So we're bringing these folks into the same, um it's a state-level language, so it makes sense. We updated the payment in lieu of insurance using language again from the teacher contract. Added long-term disability benefit copied from what you just settled with the teacher contract as well as term life insurance and the voluntary insurance benefit. And while these folks don't, they're non-union, so it's not negotiated. Um you know, one of my policies is care treatment of staff. And so this brings us back into compliance with um equity of what we offer across the district. We're still in negotiations with one union, but um it would have teachers and the non-union folks in equitable circumstances.
How many folks are non-union? Just curious, like?
I I don't know if I can give you a number, but I can tell you who. So um the central office directors are all non-union, non-union. Um the administrative assistants across the district are non-union, custodians are non-union. And then there might be a person here or there. Anyone I forgot, Brenda, primarily?
Um bus monitors are non-union. Parent educators at Barstow are non-union. Um you said secretary custodians.
Secretaries, custodians.
Central office staff.
Yeah.
About, there's about twenty-five to thirty people throughout the district.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. So all those in favor of uh policy GD slash R, non-union support personnel terms and conditions of employment, please signify by saying aye. Okay, looks unanimous. Perfect.
Brenda's here. Are there any questions on the superintendent's report about efficiency Vermont ESER funds or the food service lunch program? How we spent um that we had to have a corrective action that made us spend money? Because we ended up with too much money um through the COVID school closures.
Oops.
In our food services account, you can't do that. And so we had to spend sixty-five thousand and I laid it out for you how we are, we have to spend it on that program. So I laid it out for you how we are spending it. Um and that's in the superintendent's report and that's Brenda as well, just in case there are questions. It looks like Barbara has her hand up.
Go ahead, Barbara.
I was just curious as to uh the how you came to the decision of how to distribute the money. You know, at first glance, um like, we're getting a whole lot more stuff than others and I don't know if that is probably is, I should be concerned or not, but I noticed it, so I thought I'd ask.
Right. So we talked to the Abbey Group as well as um our facility team and our principals to talk about priorities and needs and that's how we came up with the distribution of funds. So it wasn't quote equal. Um it was more the schools, um you know, uh doesn't have this piece of equipment, so they need it, that type of thing. And the Leicester And Leicester, you know, had really some like kitchen renovations, and this would always be actually in the kitchen, at the cafeteria area, and that was just because it was very, very old.
Any other questions?
Just also comprehension-wise, the food service contract is up every five years, is that what I read? And then, and then we need to bring it to bid and get three different bids? That's, that's what's happening next year?
Yes. It's a, it's a large contract. It's over half a million dollars for the whole district, and it is extremely regulated. The Agents of Education is the one who actually basically writes the bid documents, and then we have to kind of follow their process with their approval every step of the way. And it's about a 90-day process. So that will be on next year's agenda for this board to, to award a new contract. Once the contract is awarded, you have the right, you can only award one year at a time, but you can renew up to four times. So you can get essentially four, five years from one mender, so that if it doesn't work out, you have an out clause, and if it doesn't work out, you don't have to go through that arduous process every year or every three years.
And how long have we been for the Abbey, with the Abbey Group? Just a long, long time?
Obviously, we have been with the Abbey Group for a long, long time. We have bid it out, you know, probably four times since I've been here, maybe three times, and they have been a successful bidder. Part of the process when we bid it out is to define how we're going to grade and award the contract. It's not just a flat dollar amount. It has to do with the breadth and depth of their offerings, of their programs, as well as the dollar amount, obviously.
Sure, thanks.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Brenda. Have a happy birthday.
See you later.
Don't worry, I'll see you at the next meeting.
Oh, that's right. Boy, we're ruining your birthday. All right.
Bye.
We'll see you soon. Bye.
Thank you for doing that.
Oh, sure. All right, so while we're at governance process, why don't we just go ahead and finish up with the pre-K voucher requests?
Which I actually already reported on.
Right, but we do need to take up the pre-K voucher request.
Oh, yeah.
So there was a pre-K voucher request at the last meeting from Mr. Marini and his family. I understand that he was one of the lucky winners today of the voucher request.
Correct.
And so therefore, I am going to assume that he no longer needs this pre-K voucher request, and I'm going to put it to bed. However, and we will notify him of that, and if that is not the case, then he can let us know.
There's another. I believe there's another.
Oh, is there another? I didn't know there was another.
It came through a while back through Let's Talk.
He sent his again through Let's Talk.
Yeah, no, this was a female.
Okay.
So, let me see. We have a voucher request from Kirsty Thompson. Let me see who the pre-K is. And she, her child was not chosen, so you have a voucher request. That is so tiny, I can't read it. To attend a program in Middlebury. And generally speaking, I don't yet know the capacity. It's too early to know the capacity of our programs and whether or not we will be at capacity. So my recommendation is that you have me explain to this parent that we first need to determine if there's capacity, and you would revisit it probably at your August meeting.
Since we haven't actually seen it, and I think that's probably wise. So how does everyone else feel about that? Jacob is saying, okay. I can't see anybody else online, so if you could just say a couple of words.
I can take that back.
You good with it?
Okay.
That's fine.
That wasn't it.
And Becky and Barbara? Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And Becky?
I'm mixed. I am, and it's sort of a bummer for a family to have to wait until August to know what the plans are.
If we know sooner, maybe we can send something out sooner, but at this point, probably need to wait. I would hate to act on something tonight when we haven't actually been able to read it and digest their request.
Yeah, I totally get it.
Okay.
I'm just thinking from that perspective.
So I can bring it back in June, and they'll give you an update in June.
All right, so why don't we do that? We'll bring it back in June and see if we have any updates and see if we can do something then. Okay? Okay. Perfect. All right. Moving on, so Jean has done a wonderful job of providing us with monitoring report for 2.6 Asset Protection. It was in your packet. If someone wanted to make a motion to accept that monitoring report, then we can discuss if needed.
Hello?
Okay, so Becky is making the motion. And Jacob is saying, oh, Barbara, okay, Barbara for a second. Okay, discussion on asset protection.
I think you've all seen it before at your individual boards.
We have. So I looked through it, I saw that she was in complete compliance, lots of good examples of evidence. But if anyone else has anything else to say? Okay, hearing none? Oh, go ahead.
As I say, I had a question, but I can't find it now. It was under the blood form pathogen. Not all people, you don't always have 100% because of the way people are hired.
Right, so when you run a report at any, right, when you run a, when we run a report for something like this, I could have hired three new people yesterday, so today's report is going to say 90% because the new hires, it's not instantaneous. You're supposed to do it within the first 30 days. So it's, and, and that's how we get our data. But what does happen is I get a copy of that report every month, and with names of who hasn't completed trainings, and so does Brooke Dolan, and Brooke reaches out to them, and we nudge them until they're done. But the report won't necessarily show that as a moment in time, unless we're not hiring.
Right. That was just my question, was how do we, how do we make sure they get?
That's a good question.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all of those in favor of executive monitoring report 2.6 Asset Protection, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, perfect. 100%. Okay, our last piece of the puzzle tonight, before we talk about our annual work plan and our next meeting, is our own policy that we need to go through, which is 4.3 and Agenda Planning. Let's see. So the policy, this should all be in your packet if you want to try and follow along. We've both done this at our individual boards, but the first one is, "To accomplish its job description with a governance style consistent with board policies, the board will follow an annual work plan that completes a review of ends policies annually, continually improves board performance through board education, enrich input and deliberation, provides a mechanism to record and save opportunities for improvements, and allows the board to meet its legal obligations." So we do have a work plan that we devise in August. We also do review our ends, or parts of our ends, throughout the year. Throw out anything you're thinking. As far as a reasonable interpretation, I think this just means that we have, that we use a governing style that allows us to get our work done efficiently Sorry, I have to write all this down because Melinda requires me to give it to her, and then she's like, what did you write? Okay. The next one is, "The cycle will conclude each year on the last day of June, coinciding with the end of the school fiscal year, so that administrative planning and budgeting can be based on accomplishing a one-year segment of the board's most recent statement of long-term ends." So reasonable interpretation is that it, you know, it's from July 1 to June 30. And again, you can see that on our work plan. "The cycle will start in August with the board's development of its annual work plan for the next year. The chair will provide a report of the board's work from the previous cycle, and in consultation with other board members and the superintendent, will create an annual agenda. These will be presented to the board for review no later than the scheduled meeting of the planning year. The annual work plan will be approved at the meeting following an annual retreat of the Rutland Northeast Supervisory Union Board prior to the start of the new school year. Consultations with selected groups and the ownership or other methods of gaining ownership input, governance education, and education related to ends determination." So again, we do have an annual retreat every year in August where we put together our And I assume that my, providing the report is, is the sheet that Melinda gives every year. Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, and yeah, and I also do an annual report, so yeah, that's true. Okay. "A board member may recommend or request an item for board discussion by submitting the item to the chair no later than five days before the agenda is to be warned." So our agendas go out the Friday before our meeting, which would mean that if you want to put something on for board discussion, it would need to come to me no later than mon, the Monday before, that Monday before.
Monday, the week before.
Yeah. And I think that happens. We don't, you guys don't normally ask for things to be added to the agenda. Right?
Right.
"And throughout the year, the board will attempt to consent agenda items as expeditiously as possible. One member of the board can remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion." And we do that all the time. And there's one more. "Superintendent monitoring will be included on the agenda in accordance with the board's schedule." So I think the way we've looked at this is that we monitor the superintendent through her executive limitations, and we do that monthly.
And you have it on your work plan.
Anything else I should add to this beautiful document? No? Awesome.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory, that one.
I know, I like it. Okay. So, that's that. Our next RNESU board meeting is Wednesday, June 15 at 5 o'clock here at Otter Valley. It'll also be available online. According to our work plan, which is almost to the end, we will be looking at consent agenda. The superintendent will give their annual reflection.
You know, that actually should be taken off, and the reason is, I mean, I give the report, but that's based on when, before you went to the current evaluation schedule, you had the superintendent provide goals at the beginning of the year?
Okay.
And then report out on those goals in June.
All right.
And I don't know what to report out on that, you know?
Okay.
I can say a fun time was had by all and tell you all the things I did, but you might not want to read it.
All right, fair enough. So we will get an overview of human resources next time from Brooke, I'm assuming. We will also be talking about our own policy 4.7 Governance Investment, and we will also continue talking about transportation and bus updates and bus financing if needed at that point.
And it's not because you did it tonight.
Perfect. So done up there. All right.
What was the one before bus financing?
Transportation and bus update.
I think that was tonight, too.
Okay, yeah.
But maybe not. I'll ask.
Okay.
If there was something else. You didn't need a motion from that 4.0.
No, we don't, no, we're just doing, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that's it. Anything else we need to talk about? Oh, we should probably talk about when, or at least be thinking about for next meeting, when you want to do our retreat, because we will not be able to do our retreat prior to OV's retreat. Like we know, you know, normally we would do an hour before. So if you want to do a Wednesday, that's fine, we would just have to pick a different Wednesday, maybe the following Wednesday after Ovu-UU. Their date is set for Wednesday, August 17 at this point, so it would be August 24, I So you don't have to decide tonight, but the sooner we know, the more we can plan for it.
I know that I will be out of town then.
Okay. Do you, will you be back that week, or are you out that entire week?
We're gone, we're gone right up until the beginning of school, you know, wedding on the West Coast.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's getting married, but so we're only gone then.
Maybe a different night, the week of the 15th.
So maybe we could do a different night, the week of the 15th. It just couldn't be Wednesday.
And Barstow, I think, is Monday.
And Barstow's Monday, so.
18th, 19th, Thursday.
Yeah, I would prefer not Friday, honestly. But we could do a Thursday if that worked for everyone, the 18th. Okay. So we'll pencil in Thursday, the 18th, and if that needs to change, we can talk about it at our next meeting. Is that okay with everyone?
That sounds, that sounds good. We don't have our plans, our travel plans set, I just know that we'll definitely be gone on the 24th.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, then on that note, I would accept a motion to adjourn at 5:53.
So.
Okay, second? Okay, good night. We'll see you later. Approve the agenda, please. Thank you, Bill.
Second.
And Derek? All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you for that. So tonight, we are here with three of our four new board members, so I thought it would be nice if we all went around to say who we are, where, who we represent, and then maybe a sentence or two about yourself. So Brendan, you're in the corner, so you get to start.
I'm Brendan Loughlin. I'm a student board rep, first school board, and I live in Brandon, I'm in ninth grade.
Thanks.
I'm Natalie Steen. I am a Brandon rep. I live in Brandon. I have four boys, two at Otter Valley, two at Nashabe, soon to have three at Otter Valley. I've been on the board for a year now, and I currently work at Middlebury College in the general counsel's office.
Nice. Jeremy?
I'm Jeremy Gildrean. I'm a new at-large board member. I live in Leicester, and I have two kids that go to the Leicester School in second and fifth grade.
Great.
Eric Pearson, Pittsburgh, two children here at Otter Valley.
I'm Bill Mathis. I'm from Goson and represent the town of Goson, spent 10 years on the state board and vice chair of that group. And spent a few years here at Rutland Northeast as superintendent when we had an interesting little decision called the Brigham Decision, which changed things a little bit. uh when we had a interesting little decision called the Brigham Decision, which changed things a little bit.
You did have something to do with that, didn't you? Okay. Um, I'm Lori Bertrand. I am the representative from Sudbury, and I'm also the board chair. Um, I have three kids, all of whom are now at Otter Valley. Um, a junior, a soph- uh, no, junior, freshman, and seventh grader. So um, that's about it.
Um, my name's Derek Larson. Uh, I'm a Brandon representative. Uh, and I'm a senior who's in his senior year, uh, is finishing up. And um I'm on my, I just upped my second term. I did three years here and uh looking forward to the next round.
Hi, I'm Padua. Uh, I am a junior here at Otter Valley, and I am a student rep.
I'm Greg Bernhardt. Um, I'm an at-large school board member. I think I'm going into my sixth year, maybe, at this point.
Um, my name's Devin Fuller. I'm a new board member. I have two daughters that graduated from Otter Valley, uh, one just last year, so I've been involved here. I was a Nashaby board member as well for a long time.
I'm Brett Mullin, uh, new Pittsburgh rep. Um, I got uh two kids, a first and a second grader. Uh, my first grader had dental surgery today, so we were at UVM this morning at 6:00 AM. So that was fun. Um, yeah.
Uh, I'm Kevin Thornton. I'm a Brandon rep. This is my third year. Um, I guess for the new board members, I'd like to say that I've been volunteering teaching in the school this semester. Um, co-teaching the electric motor course, the history and technology of the motor. I've done the history part. And um uh helping out is, you know, sweeping the floors or whatever with the heavy equipment class.
Charlene?
Charlene Bryant. Um, oh dear. Let's see. Both my husband and I are graduates of Otter Valley. Um, we've had four children go through Otter Valley, one grandson graduate from Otter Valley, uh, two that are currently in Otter Valley. Um, and I have been the reporting secretary for the district for more years than I want to count.
Great. And then we're gonna go to um the people online. I see Barbara Ebling.
Hi, um, I'm Barbara Ebling. I'm an at-large member. I live in Brandon. I'm currently at Narra Collin. My kids do gymnastics down here. I've been on the board about five years. And um, I'm also one of the RNES, I'm one of the OB reps to the RNESU.
Thank you. Kristen?
I'm Kristen Hubert. I'm the director of curriculum for RNESU.
Soon to be new superintendent, for any of those of you who don't know that. Uh, Susanna?
Hey, Susanna, wait. I'm the equity and engagement coach for RNESU.
Great, thank you. Uh, Susan?
Hey, everybody. I'm Susan Hennessy. I'm the technology integration coach for the district, 102.
Max?
Hi there. I'm Max Berman. I'm the other technology integration coach for the SEO.
And Brenda?
Hi, I'm Brenda Fleming, and I'm the business manager.
And Joni?
Hi, I'm Joni Westall. I'm an MTSS coach.
Perfect. And uh last but not least, Jean?
Oh, uh, Jean Collins, um superintendent of Rutland Northeast.
Great.
And we have a guest on there tonight.
Yes, uh, Matthew. Oh, welcome. Okay. Well, we'll try to give you something good to report. Alright. Um, communications with parent, citizens, and staff. Um, I don't see anybody here that's here to talk to us. Um, and I haven't received any new let's talk communications to let you know of, have you?
Nope, you have a principal who just entered.
Okay, great. And um Debbie, can you hear us? Um, if you just want to introduce yourself, we just went around and did introductions.
Oh, hi, everyone. Uh, Debbie Alexander, the local principal. I'm assuming you mean me.
That, yes, yeah, that's you. Thank you. Alright, so our first um piece of work to do tonight is our facilities discussion, um, summer work plan and requests for approval. So, um, can I get someone to make the motion that is here on the agenda? And then we can have uh Brenda go through her um presentation.
Do you, do you need a motion to accept the, as proposed?
Mm-hmm.
I so move.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you, Natalie. Okay, Brenda, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. So um, I, I believe included in your packet is a couple of pages about the summer facility request. This is what we do every year around this time. So I wanted to kind of let you know where we start, and what we have sort of in the bank, if you will, in regards to the lit, facility estimated, uh, reserves.
Brenda? Brenda?
Yes.
Is there any way to put that up on the thing so everybody can see it, maybe?
How about if I work on that, Brenda, while you keep talking?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Um, so I'll start with the estimated balance that we have in those funds. And we have 2.2 million 72,000. So we have a nice healthy balance. And that does include a couple of things that we've been providing you with updates along the way in regards to the water situation at Lester. Um, there is about $135,000 of expenditures that we have so far made on that. We do anticipate approximately $80,000 in revenue that we've not yet received, but we have applied for it, uh, for reimbursements. But so of that, uh, within that 2 million, we have subtracted the 135. We've not added back that 80,000. So in other words, we haven't uh counted the money before we've been confirmed that we are going to get it. And that doesn't consider any changes that we might have or any increases from this year that might happen based on our next conversation about uh the end-of-the-year facility reserves. So if you wouldn't mind scrolling down just a little bit, Jean. So here's a list, and I tried to organize it um in order of school and in order of the uh requests that would come from the facility fund. That's the first grid. We are requesting 440,300. Um, one item on this list for Otter Valley includes a $9,000 to hire an engineer to study what it might mean to build a boardwalk over the wetlands of the Otter Valley fields to help access um fields and um and what they call the June Cemetery. I'm not familiar with that area, so I'm not sure why it's called the June Cemetery. If the board was interested in um funding that engineering study that is on this list or included in the 440,300, we would be able to know what it might cost to actually build it and what uh rules and regulations we'd have to be sensitive to because we are crossing a wetlands. If at some point after the engineering study is complete, we will come back to this board to report on the engineering study. And if at that time or uh the next round of um facility investments, the board was interested in moving forward with that construction, the Clarks, former uh board member and teachers at Otter Valley, said that they would donate $10,000 towards the construction of that, of that project. So this first grid is the priorities that will come out of this year's facility fund. This does not include any ESER grants or anything else. And then the last list, um, that, yeah, thank you, Jean. That just kind of is the things that the facility team, the principals, and I have been working on, that we recognize are future projects. So projects that we are watching and will be expecting to add in the next two to five years. Or, as you can see in this very top part, will be funded with grants. So as you can see from this, Lester, for example, in the next two to five years, we're looking at removing and installing some carpet. If it has a zero as the final priority, that means we're doing it within general funds. When it has a two, it means it's a request that we expect to give in the next two to five years to the board. So it's not action. Right now, it's information. And then um, as you have already read about and know that we are using ESER grants for some construction. We're using, um, uh, we talked a lot about the modular units, uh, the Lester unit has been ordered. And the Nashaby unit, we're still working with the agency of education on a waiver, but I hope to order by the end of this week. Those are funded with ESERS. And then we have also applied for efficiency Vermont, our ESER funds for ventilation projects. And so those are all included, more for information. Then uh, to just kind of give you a, a feeling of the breadth and depth of our facility plans and our identification of facility needs. So I feel like I've done a lot of talking. Um, I know at the last board meeting, or a couple of board meetings, there was a discussion about the shop at Otter Valley. And you will see on this list, under Otter Valley, the biggest thing we are proposing is the bleachers for 150,000. That's the interior gymnasium bleachers, and they right now are unsafe and not being able to be used. The boardwalk was as I just talked about. And then the shop, we are replacing and improving the current air handler system that's included in here for about 35,000. We are also um trying to address the vaping issue by adding vaping sensors for the bathroom. It's kind of a new concept. We're just starting to get bids on that. But that will um allow for, if, if the vaping sensors go off while in the bathroom, when the door opens outside of the bathroom, in the hall, a picture will be taken and notification will be sent to someone so that we can address that issue. We do have um, uh, more funds outlined for the shop in future years. We did have a lot of conversations with Jim, our facility team, and Devin about short-term and long-term plans for the shop, as well as um really the vision and philosophy of the shop program. We have in the state of Vermont what they call CTEs. Used to be referred to as regional tech centers. Now they're community tech education centers. The intent is that um we want to collaborate with these centers. And we are nicely situated because we're pretty much exactly between two of them, between Brandon, uh, between Middlebury and Stafford. But that vision hasn't been, um, it hasn't really been defined yet as to what that looks like. So again, I think I talked a lot, so I'm going to stop now and see if um I missed anything that people have questions about.
And people online, you'll have to raise your hand because we can't see everybody, if there's anybody online with questions.
Alright, so questions?
Yes.
Bill, go ahead.
What should be on the list that isn't on the list?
Uh, nothing. So um, when we looked at this, we thought very carefully about two things. Um, the priorities with safety always being the, the first priority. And then the next one being time and realistic considerations. Uh, so as we, so, you know, could we do more perhaps? But we do only have eight weeks of the summer. And we don't want to over commit, nor do we want to, um, especially knowing that construction right now is at an all-time high. We wanted to make sure that we addressed the things that were most important from safety, that there's not anything on the list that we felt should be addressed sooner that we've ignored.
Devin?
I, I just want to get an update. I don't understa- I don't know what's going on with the lowthrip water replacement.
Can you hear him, Brenda?
Do you mean Lester? I think you mean Lester.
Lester.
He would like an update on the Lester water situation.
Yeah, so I'll give you the Reader's Digest version, Devin, and then I'd be more than happy to give you an in-depth one. It's been going on for a few years. Yeah, it's been going on for two years now. So um, in regular water testing, we own our own, what they call a water system. And so we have to do regular water testing. And in doing that, they discovered PFASs in the water at an extremely high level. So we've been mitigating that over the last few years. Uh, it started, I think, in 2020. Uh, it was definitely during the pandemic. And first we had to find the source of the contamination and then come up with a plan for mitigation. So we've been doing that, and we have a plan before the Agency of Natural Resources right now that includes continuing monitoring and treating. And we have um, our PFAS levels in our water are in, um, well below the acceptable level at this point. So we are pretty confident that we have addressed the water issues, but it is going to be a long-term monitoring process to make sure that they don't creep back up.
Thank you.
Anyone online? Oh, sorry, I just.
Anyone online wants to go first, it's fine.
No one? Okay. Go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, so I have uh two questions. One, the shop handling uh system appropriation uh seems a little low. Is, it's my understanding that we have to build a shed to contain a new shop uh uh handling system on the outside of the building? Is that included in the 35,000?
It is not included in the 35,000. And when we talked to Devin and Rich about that, um, Rich, uh, I'm sorry, Devin said that would be in the second phase, that that was not necessary in the current year.
So we, the, would we install a system and leave it uncovered? I, I'm a little confused about the sequence.
To be honest with you, I don't know the answer to that. I do, the only thing I do know is that uh Devin was saying that the air handler unit system needed to be improved and updated interior, but he did not indicate that the shed on the exterior needed to be built at this time. So I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, uh, thank you. My other question's about the uh the uh, the bathrooms. Um, uh, to my mind, the problem we have in the bathrooms at Otter Valley is vandalism. And uh, are these vaping sensors going to be vandal-proof? And uh, yeah, so that's, that's the first part of the, that question.
I am assuming that the vaping sensors are going to be on the ceiling, and that we will do everything we can to make them as um, you know, as vandal-proof as we would um, other sensors such as heat and smoke detection systems that are.
I know there were some ceiling tiles removed in the last few weeks and stuffed into a toilet. Um, uh, we have some students who are very actively vandalizing and who were very um persistent about the destruction and creative about it in some ways. Um, so I'm concerned that, that uh vaping center, my sensors might be an uh, an attempt to solve a um symptom rather than, than a cause.
I think that it's a good point what you were bringing up, but it seems like two problems. And the vaping sensors are to address and hopefully prevent students from becoming addictive, addicted to um vaping and tobacco products. And vandalism is a behavior issue that, that needs a different set. And vandalism is a behavior issue that needs a different set of procedures to address. Way out of my league on that one.
I assume that we would have insurance too if they were vandalized.
We do have insurance if they are vandalized.
Deductible.
The deductible is, oh, that's a good question. I believe it's $2,500.
Other questions? If anyone's on their hand, kiss.
I'm Brett Mullin, for anybody who didn't catch that. So forgive my ignorance on this question, but what is the district's plan as far as the state's mandated PCB testing? Are we afraid we're gonna-
I can start that one, Brenda, but we are not scheduled for PCB testing until 2024. We're not in the first round of tests. Our buildings, including this building, were built around the time where most high schools or schools have PCBs, so it's very possible. Of course, they changed the level of contamination from when Burlington High School was first identified to later. The legislature did just approve $24 million for remediation, which is barely a scratch in the dirt, but it's a start. So we're at least two years out from being tested, but there is a schedule. And we have had PFAS testing in all of our schools. We went through that round.
Are those pictures of the shop air handling system that I sent earlier available?
I can make them available.
You can.
Maybe while we're waiting, I have a question about the, Brenda, on when will the vision or plan be put together for this idea of using the Stafford and Haniford and Otter Valley program?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, we have a new administrative team, as you know, coming on July 1st with Michael Ruppel and Patrick. So one of the things we had Kristen as superintendent. So we will be in conversations internally about what the vision is for the shop program and then reach out to the local, to the two regional tech centers to see what their ideas are. Our goal, of course, would be to be collaborative versus competitive. I don't know that competitive is in anybody's best interest. Where collaborative is in all of our best interests.
So there's no timeline as of yet?
There is, no, there's no timeline. We're waiting for the new administration to come.
He was talking about the air handling system here, which is the $35,000. Yes, he's talking. So-
These are pictures that Kevin sent?
Yes, I believe so.
You want him to talk about them?
I think he wanted to see the air handling one, so-
Well, I'm ready to talk about all of them. I'd be delighted to.
I think we can talk about the air handling one at this point.
Okay, so there's the air handling system. The air handling system, I looked up the serial number on it. It seems to have been made in the early 1970s. We had a gentleman in there at an open house a couple of weeks ago who was Class of 67, and he said it was there in his time. Basically, anything painted green in that shop goes back to the very early 70s or 1960s. So this is a case. This is called the J-line. You can read about it at a site called vintage machinery dot com, which covers everything that's green in the shop because it's all vintage. And the J-line, there's a commentary on the website, somebody who used to work on them in the 80s and says they were calling it the junk line as early as the 1980s. And then the next slide, please. That's the, that's the current vet system, which you can see obviously has to go. That duct tape is probably older than our students. It's been patched and re-patched and it doesn't have any suction power at all, really. The table saw, which is relatively new, that's from a year ago, that the sawdust in that jams up pretty quickly. You can see the dust in the air when, say, the miter saw is going. This thing's in dire need of replacement, so I'm concerned that, I'm concerned that we can't do it fast enough. So that's why I'm worried that $35,000 to fix that is not enough, particularly if we're going to need some kind of lean-to shed on the outside of the building to contain a new system. An air handling system should be outside. It's also incredibly noisy when that thing's on, among other things. So that's the, that's the type of problem we're facing. And I would like to talk about the other two slides I sent, if that's possible.
I think we need-
Can I speak to the system for just a moment?
Sure.
So this number of $35,000 is close enough to the Vermont bid law requirement of $40,000. So we would likely, we would seek a couple of bids, multiple bids. And if, in the event of doing so, we find out that the $35,000 is insufficient or should be prioritized differently, we would return to this board, as we've done in the past, to say, we need more, or we need to change our priorities and give you an update before we, you know, miss anything. So in the event that, when we put this up to bid, the experts in the field say, you really need X1, A and Z2, or you need to do this over that, we would come back to you with that information and a request for additional funds or redistribution of these funds.
But your $35,000 estimate is based on discussions with Devin and with Rich and with whoever else would be looking at this air handling system?
And with, yes. And with, Steve Eaton is an HVAC, our elementary facility managers, has a lot of experience as an HVAC. And I know we've also spoken with electricians.
Okay. Yes, Bill?
Mari raised a good point there, is how are the costs estimated for the several pages of listed items?
So for the items, for most of the items, on the first, they are conversations with vendors. Sometimes they are based on actual quotes with vendors. Sometimes they're just estimates based on, you know, other work that we have done and what we expect them to be. The second chart, you know, that's down here on the bottom, so information only for the future, might be a little bit more unreliable in the Esser's because it's just our estimate of what the cost might be today, but, you know, we don't know what it might be when we actually put it on the list as our priority, whether it's in two years, three years, or five years.
Derek, you haven't-
Go ahead, Derek.
No, you can go.
I've asked three questions. Go ahead.
Well, I just have a comment that I wanted to thank Brenda for doing this. I find it really helpful to have these things in, on a one-pager sort of thing, to understand the bigger picture of where we're going, what our needs are, two to five years out. I think that's very important to understand as we go forward on a monthly basis, too. So thank you for that clarity.
Devin?
I have a question about the bleachers, the $125,000 for the bleachers. Is that both sides of the, of the gym?
A hundred and fifty, yes.
That's both sides of the gym?
Yes.
Yes, and that also would trigger a bid.
Yeah.
And thank you for your kind words, Derek. I appreciate that, and I will share it with the facility team, Amanda, and Devin, who helped really put this all together. It is most definitely a team effort with people looking at our facilities from various different lenses and their expertise.
We should also indicate that we do have a facilities master plan, which shows everything that we have in all of our buildings, the age of things, how long they will last. And so that also is how you create this list for us, correct?
And especially the two to five years, yes. So we revisit that plan every year. It's like five years out. And things reprioritize, what we thought could wait three years sometimes has to be fixed tomorrow. So we reprioritize each year. We bring you the list of what we're doing each year. And then, the information only continues on things that are still on that list.
Right.
I have one quick question about the future projects, the priorities associated with them. They're the ones that say grant-funded. Are those grants that are in process being applied for? Or is it the idea, like, if a grant becomes available, then we'll apply to do these things?
These are grants that are all related to Esser funds. So there are two types of Esser funds. There are the Esser funds that you've heard us talking about for the last couple of years, of which we, as a whole district, are receiving just under $10 million. And they are funding some things, like as you look at this, they are funding the last one in the Leicester column, the Leicester Modular Classroom and Offices. That's coming from our Esser funds. The other ones that have to do with, the kitchen floor is also from our funds, that's from excess hot lunch funds. And then, anything that has to do with ventilation, the one above that, for example, on the Leicester list, the $40,000, that is with Efficiency Vermont Esser funds. So the Agency of Education has partnered with Efficiency Vermont to manage and prioritize and fund their ARP Esser funds that have been reserved to improve ventilation. And so these are grants that we, the ventilation grants, we have actually applied for. We are on their list, but they are going through their priorities and identifying their priorities. They have not released those yet, so they are on our list. We're hoping that they will be Esser-eligible, either in round one or round two, but we don't know that yet. So as that unfolds, we will report back. Most of those Esser grants, which again are the ones that relate to ventilation, I believe for this district is under the, under or close to the $40,000 bid limit. So many of those would be bid out, those that are under it are smaller scope projects, and they would just be accomplished once we got the grant.
Need to explain Esser grants for our new people.
Sure.
Yeah.
So would you like, could you explain how we got those Esser grants and where they come from and what they're supposed to be used for, please?
Yes, and I know Kristen is on here, or I think she is on here. So she's been instrumental in Esser funding. So with the onset of COVID, there were different pots of funds that have been distributed to help support schools in responding to both mitigating the spread of the virus, but also responding to how to educate in it, how to, and then how to recover from it. So I'm not sure I can even say what Esser stands for. Education, secondary, elementary, what does it stand for?
I don't know anymore. I recovered.
Yeah, sorry, I was looking for the-
Elementary, secondary.
... school emergency relief fund.
There you go.
There you go. And that's, we've received it, it's been, it's a very large pie that they have cut up in different avenues or different pieces. We've received many Esser grants that are just granted to us that we are entitled to, and we have also applied for many of them. So a couple of things that we have applied for are these Efficiency Vermont Esser grants. Those are not entitled, those are application process. And we have also applied for after-school funding Esser funds. And that, again, is not an entitlement. We've applied for those.
One-time money?
Oh, yes, all of this is one-time money. It is one-time money. It does exist, though, for, it starts with March 17th, 2020, and it is available until September 30th, 2024. So it has a longer life than most grants, exceeds one year, and it does, it to go retroactive to efforts and things that happened in March of 2020.
You know how much we've received so far on those grants?
There is a webpage that's dedicated to the grants on the RNESU page. I don't know if you want to go down that path now, but I can pull it up.
I can also look at that one.
I will tell you that we have received $9.7 million. And every time we get a new one, I update that list.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, it's under COVID Planning on Recovery on the Community tab of the webpage.
Any other just questions regarding the list that she has for us tonight? For summer projects?
I've got one more quick question.
Sure.
The Luthrup list, I see there's two furnaces, one's $12,000, one's $7,000. I'm sure there's an obvious answer as to why, I just don't know it.
Two buildings.
Yeah, well, I mean, is the scope of work that much greater for one than the other?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's based on the size of the facilities.
Yeah, the Blue House is much bigger than Caverly. Caverly is just a round building.
Caverly's single floor, Blue House is two floors and a basement and-
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion on the table?
I have to amend the motion. I would like to amend the motion to add $200,000 to the request.
You have to ask the person who made the motion if they're willing to do that.
Okay. I can't remember who made the motion.
Is there, may I ask if there's a reason? I mean, is there, is it just for anything we feel like spending, or is there a particular reason for-
Oh, yeah, I've got-
So you can answer a question.
Okay. So the wording would be to amend it, to add $200,000 from Esser funds, $25,000 of which would go to the Musa Lamu program for purposes to be determined by Mr. Hart, subject to the approval of the principal. The other $175,000 to go to the OV Tech program for the purpose of establishing a welding program and/or purchasing a CNC router, CAD CAM equipment, 3D printers, and/or other necessary equipment for the program with priorities to be determined by Mr. Karpak, subject to the approval of the principal.
Thanks.
Before, I have a question about whether this request would be eligible for Esser funds?
I have a point of order.
So what's your point of order?
He's asking to amend the motion.
I know, but the motion to amend has to be seconded.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. So Derek, you were asking if Esser funds would be eligible for those?
Correct.
If I could interject, this board doesn't have control of Esser funds. Esser funds are awarded to the Rollin' Northeast Board.
Okay. So then I'd just say it would be from the facilities, excuse me, I don't see the-
From the facilities fund?
Yeah, the facilities fund.
Okay.
Is that okay with a second?
Yes.
Okay. So going back to the person who made the motion originally, was that you, Derek?
Yes.
Are you okay with that friendly amendment?
I thought we had a discussion about the facilities group. There's a facilities working group that has generated these numbers through discussion with folks, particularly around the shop requests. There was, Devin was involved in those discussions. That's correct?
Yes, Brett does not.
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, so I would, I would, I would, I would see that it should defer to the, maybe a work group conversation, but for the purposes of this amendment, no, I don't accept that. I think we should go with the original amendment.
Point of order is your resident parliamentarian. Is that a motion to amend does not have to have the concurrence of the original motion maker. It's only a friendly amendment, so.
Okay.
Right, I think it started as a friendly and then became a motion to amend, I think that's a confusion.
I think he did go to a motion to amend.
But he ended up moving to a motion to amend.
Okay. So, since you're our parliamentarian, which one do we vote on first?
We vote on the amendment first.
Okay. So, all of those?
Wait, we need to discuss the amendment. And at this point, the pictures I've sent earlier become relevant, can we have them up, please?
I have a question.
Sure.
We're voting on spending for the summer, is what you're proposing just for the summer?
Yep, uh, no, that, it's, it's to be determined by the two teachers and in consultation with the principal, so.
Have you spoken with the two teachers?
I have not, I have not. So.
Brenda, you have your hand up.
Yes, so a couple of things, when we put this letter together, when we put this list together, as I mentioned earlier, we did speak to the teacher, and he was very clear that he was not looking for or expecting all of this in one year. We are very sensitive to the, the short time period in the summer. A motion like this or a project like this, to this extent, would require engineering likely, possibly, depending on what, everything we are looking at replacing or doing. And realistically, I don't see that happening in time for action this summer.
And if I may add to that, Brenda, you mentioned earlier, and I want to revisit it, we also have to be respectful and in compliance with the tech center collaborative programs. For Otter Valley to be developing programs that are in competition with either Stafford or Hannaford is not acceptable. And those discussions are underway now, so we can't simply declare we're going to start a new program. It doesn't, doesn't work that way. And in fact, if it, if it is acceptable to start new programs, there could possibly be Perkins funds made available through the tech centers to make that happen.
Questions?
Does Stafford and Hannaford have a welding program and a CAD program?
I, I can't.
Yes, they do. I can, yes, they do.
They has about a 50% acceptance rate. We've got numerous OV students that want to learn to weld, who are either too old for Stafford at this point, or are, are, you know, possibly not going to get in in the future.
Just voting a motion is, an idea, not a motion, is could we possibly put this into a reserve fund? And then keep it there for the next fiscal year?
It's already in a reserve fund? Kevin's motion is addressing taking 200,000 additional out of your facility fund?
Yeah.
That exists.
Or earmarking it.
You can earmark, but you decide every year, but. You don't earmark. You earmark by coming to the board like now and saying this is how you're going to spend it. But the facilities fund is what was approved by the voters, and you are, you, the board, are in control of that fund.
So I'd like to explain to the board why I'm a little bit apparently impatient, and, and the slides are going to be relevant. We've already seen that one, can, in the, can we go to some of the others? The fir, the first one that we didn't look at before. So that's the school lathe. That was made by the Atlas, I forget what it's called, the Atlas Machinery Company, something to that effect. And that, if you go to the Vintage Machinery website, that was designed in 1946. The Atlas Manufacturing Company, it was called, Atlas Press Company, went out of business in 1961 when it was sold to Black &amp; Decker. I have here a little show and tell, this is, was in the school shop, found in a locker. It's spare parts for that machine from the Atlas Press Company, and the customer order is dated March 30th, 1959, I'll pass that around. So the school opened in September of 1961. That's proof that that lathe is older than the school. It came from, I think, Brandon High School, when in fact their shop was in the Brandon Town Hall. So that's from the basement of the Brandon Town Hall. I think it's older than everybody here, except perhaps Dr. Mathis. The next slide, please.
What about that, though? What is it that you, I mean, I understand the age, does it still work?
Well, what I'm saying is would, you know, there are lots of typewriters and adding machines from the 1960s that work great. We're not asking Brenda to do her job with those. If you want to use a lathe professionally in, you know, as a woodworking career now, it's going to, it's going to be programmable. So we're asking, we're asking kids to use equipment that's, that's decades old, that's completely out of date, that has nothing to do with, with modern industry. We, we just spent $209,000 on, and I, I was in favor of it. I, I seconded the motion and I voted in favor of it, to build an annex at Neshabie that's going to hold offices for adults. We spent money to hire, or I guess, actually RNESU board did, to hire a new equities director. We're hiring, we're, we're, you know, we're spending money on personnel. What we're not spending money is the, on the machines that our children use. And we're not, as I've mentioned before on this, on this board, the entire shop is nothing but woodworking equipment. We're educating these kids in 1960s technology for 1960s woodworking. In fact, we're teaching them how to be home woodworkers. We should be teaching them about CNC routers, about CAD CAM. We should be teaching them welding. We should be teaching them how to use 3D printing and programming for, for modern technologies. We have, we have two 3D print, 3D printers in the school basement now. I'm telling you, those things are stacked up like O'Hare Airport on Thanksgiving weekend. There are kids coming, streaming in, they're trying to use these things, and they have to line up and wait to do them. There's hunger among these kids for this type of education. We're not providing it, that's why I'm impatient. We find ways to, to do things like build annexes for people, for adults. We provide adults with new equipment, we haven't done it for our kids. We need to start doing that, we need to start doing it urgently. You know, when we were planning the heavy equipment class, at one point, there were a lot of moving parts, and I said, gee, I don't know if we can do this this year. And somebody else said, we don't do it this year, we lose five kids. If we don't start teaching our kids welding now, we're going to lose 15 a year, I think. Same thing with all these other things, there's hunger among these kids. They've been robbed, particularly the sophomores and juniors have been robbed by COVID of probably a year and a half of their education, because these are not the children that thrive in front of a computer screen. They need to work with their hands, that's how they learn, that's how they want to learn, and there's a deep hunger among them to do this, for this type of education. I think Mr. Hart and Mr. Karpak are geniuses at providing that. Both are under-equipped, and that's why I think we urgently need to pass this. Uh, there's one more slide, that's, that's the thing that I was passing around, you can see the date on there.
So I understand your passion, and I see that there's a need, but I also understand that the annex is not just for adults, it's for kids with special needs and other programs. And I think that we need to remember to balance the needs of all the kids. I have a son who's in Moose, so I understand, but I don't think that everything has to be done all at once, because we have kids on IEPs and kids in the music program and kids in art who also would probably say some of their tools and supplies are just as old. So I would want to know more about every other area in the school before I'm willing to give all these funds.
So six, 60 years old, that's not.
I hear you, but I don't know if that's true for anywhere, where else, you know? I'm looking in the library and I've seen chairs from what, the 70s, 60s? So, you know, I, I hear the need.
I mean, it's capital intensive.
We're not, we're not going back and forth, so she gets, she has a right to say what she wants to say. Greg?
I was on this board before it was this board, when it was, actually, when Dr. Mathis was retiring, I came on the board, and we used to have a facilities committee. And I know we don't have committees anymore in more policy governance, which I voted for. But I do feel like one thing we're missing out on, talking about facilities, is kind of talking about big picture stuff, committing money to this program. This is sort of a big picture idea, I feel like this does fall in line with policy governance. And we're kind of, the problem is, we don't get to hear from the teachers. We get to hear about it through central office. And if we had conversations with the Moose and Tech people, we'd probably have a little more idea of a conversation to be able to figure out this conversation. We're having to figure it out without them here, it's a very strange thing to do, to commit this money.
So agreed.
I, I know, I, I agree with that, but.
So I don't want to say let's spend all this money.
I'm not done talking yet, I'm not, what I'm trying to say is, I tend to, well, I do remember being on that facilities committee. And just to give you a history, that area has been neglected forever. Like, this is an old conversation, we've needed to spend money down there for a long time. We've been trying to figure out what to do to make that space better. I do feel like this is a small amount of money for how much we're going to get out of it. I just think $200,000, if we can get a CNC router, if we can get, what was the other thing? The 3D printing? I just think there's a huge bang for your buck with this. I'm only uncomfortable because those people aren't here confirming all of this, but otherwise I am in support of doing this.
Okay.
I have a question, Kevin, this relates to what Greg was just saying. Do you know what our school's teaching capacity is in relation to the new equipment? Like, if the equipment that's being used and taught is older than I am, and that's all that's ever been taught here, if we upgrade things, is it just the cost of, okay, it's this equipment and then we're all set up to teach it? Or then is there like additional education required for the teachers to learn how to use it? Is there like, is it upgrading an entire program that's not just the cost of the, the pieces of equipment?
That's a great question. I think Mr. Karpak's fully capable of, with, with the things I've mentioned. He's, that actually gets to the last slide here. This, this is from our electric motor class. For those of you who don't know, very briefly, the electric motor was invented in Brandon, at least the American one was. And so I'm teaching collaborative class with him, with him, where I talked about Thomas Davenport, the invention of the electric motor, how it came about, blah, blah, blah. And then the kids in the second half of the class have been building motors. And this is the motor that's farthest along in that class. Everything you see there that's black, or that's actually, it's purple, looks like black in the middle, with the wire around it. All of those parts were designed and 3D printed by the kids. There's a team, pair of two kids working on this. And those, it's lacking the, the fixed magnets, they haven't gotten to that point yet, but those are the basic components of the DC electric motor that was developed in the 1830s, patented first by Thomas Davenport of Brandon, Vermont, and was a revolutionary device in world history. It, it ranks with the internal combustion engine, I think it's even higher in importance. There are probably 30 or 40 electric motors in this room at this moment. It's a completely transformative thing. So our kids have designed those pieces, they've designed, in fact, they designed the whole motor. And that's the type of education that we can provide. Now, I mean, that's, that's with two cheap 3D printers. And, what's the, I forgot the name of the program that allows them to draw the, the pieces. And they learned how to use that program, you know, it's, kind of reminds me what a dinosaur I am. The kids went from not knowing how to turn it on to designing parts like that in a couple of weeks. I showed this slide to the man at the UVM Physics Department, who, who is building the replica Davenport motor, and he said they've solved the hard problem already. The hard problem is the commutation at the, at the far end of the picture.
Okay.
This is what they can do.
So we've had, Bill has moved the question, so we need to.
You start with the amendment.
Okay. No, you vote on calling the question.
You vote on calling the.
Unless you want to concur and go with it, but actually, I've moved the question. If there's a second to the moving of the question, then we vote on that to be strictly correct about it.
I'll second moving it.
Thank you. All those in favor of moving the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Okay, so now we vote on the amendment, correct? All right.
Need to rephrase it.
Okay, so Charlene, would you be?
Not rephrase it, but repeat it, it's been a while.
So Charlene, could you?
I didn't get all of what Kevin said, because he was talking rather fast, but.
Sorry.
Motion was made by Kevin, seconded by Eric, to amend the motion to add 200K from the facilities fund, 25K of which to go to Muslammoo, to be determined by Mr. Hart and the principal. The other 175K to go to the OV Tech program for a welding program, CDC router, 3D, 3D printers, and I lost.
CAD CAM.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, pretty good. And with the priorities and those purchases set by Mr. Karpak.
Okay, yes, that is the, that is the motion.
That's the amendment.
That's the amendment.
Okay.
Okay? So are we ready to vote on the amendment? Okay, so all of those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye, and raise your hand.
Aye.
I know, and I need.
Three, four, five, say yes, and online, I see Becky saying yes.
So that's six?
Six.
Okay, and who says no?
No.
One, two, three, how come that's only four?
Barbara said no.
So that's 10. Okay. That's 11, I'm 12, who's number 13?
Jen's not here.
Jen is not here. Okay, so the amendment passes.
Now we're ready for.
A vote on the.
Make motion as amended.
Which would change it from 440 to 640, 300, right?
Right.
Okay, so all of those, do we have to have discussion on that?
Yes.
Well, nobody's.
Is there discussion on that?
I have a question.
Yes.
What is the refresh rate on this facilities fund? I mean, historically?
So that, every year, well, in previous years, we usually have about $175,000 or more that goes into the facilities fund from.
From a surplus.
From a surplus?
It depends if we have a surplus.
But it really depends, and I don't know what this year's surplus looks like. So that's what I can tell you.
Okay.
And so it's only refreshed yearly.
I have a question.
Yes.
Did the facilities group that put together the financial program for the coming year consider this idea when they were putting it together?
Yes.
Yes, they did.
Yes.
Is that shown in the projected?
The $175,000 for Devin's program is within two years, it's in, it's on this list.
So they thought it would be phased?
Yes.
Instead of all the.
Yes, that is what Devin is expecting to do, because he is a Roland Fellow next year and will not be teaching full-time.
So this is budgeted over a two-year period?
The extended plan, if you go down to the rest of the plan, it is in there over the next two or three years, as developed by Devin.
Okay, thank you.
Josh was not, is, I don't, that came out of the blue.
Yeah.
And as you pointed out, no one else has, somebody at the table speaking for them.
What would remain in the facilities fund?
It's on the first page, which is in the facilities fund. Currently, there is, the estimated balance is 2.072 million. So, if you take 640 out of that, it would leave 1.4 roughly. And that's before anything we might put in if there's a surplus from this year's budget, which I don't know if there is or not.
And how is that fund, are we earning income on that?
No, we don't, we can't earn interest on that.
Is there an estimate on the?
I'm sorry, Devin?
Will there be an estimate on, Brenda gives us an estimate of what will be put in this year? Does she have it?
So, each year, we, we have to determine if there's a surplus or a deficit. Our very conservative anticipation this year is we'll have a surplus around 190,000. We have two reserve funds approved by the voters in Otter Valley and the pipe. And one is facilities, and one is after-school program.
June 15.
Because it also, the reserve fund underwrites our after-school programs.
The time when we have people here for presentations.
At probably your next meeting, because I don't think we'll be doing it tonight, you'll, you'll determine how much of the surplus, if it's really there, will go into either of both reserve funds. That, at any year, it can be, Brenda's incredible. We usually have a surplus, but it can't be carried deep if you have a surplus.
I'm going down to-
Okay.
Derek is taking over as chair.
Okay. Greg?
I'm going by memory here. I don't have my notes over the last five, six years. But I feel like, I feel like we have a pretty good reserve fund right now. Like, this, I don't remember having millions. No, no, I know. I just, I'm thinking back to when we were thinking about the entrance to the school. I feel like we were down to, like, 600,000 that year, and we were talking about spending the 300 or whatever it was. Did we get a lot of surplus during the COVID years? Or, you know, it just seems like, I don't remember the last time we had 2 million in our reserve fund. That's-
Brenda? Yes. So, first of all, I think what you're remembering is when we merged-
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes. Now, I'm remembering, yeah.
Individual funds. And I think you're remembering Otter Valley's individual funds.
Yes, okay.
Now, all the funds have been consolidated because all of the individual funds, all the money that came into the merger has been spent on each of those schools. And now, we're down to-
Yeah.
And we've been building that up since, at the beginning of Act 46, or since we were born in COVID.
Yeah, I remember we designated, even though we were all merged, we kind of designated that, those original funds for each school until it was gone. Now, I remember that, yeah. But still, it's a pretty good size reserve fund, $2 million.
It will have, but please understand that it does cover all of the facilities.
Yep.
Very briefly, tech program has been ignored, I would say largely, for a very long time. That shop is basically in the same state it was when I was here 30 years ago. I think it's long, long overdue. And I agree that the reward versus the expenditure will be paid back exponentially.
I'm just, I would love to hear from Devin, because it all has to be operationalized. So, if Devin's not even here, and we're talking about spending dollars when he's not here to implement it, why are we in a rush to do it now and not doing, doing it in the phased approach that he's proposed here? Because this is his feedback on this form.
I have a variation on that question is, for the planning group, is why was it put into years two and three versus years one and two?
Thank you. Thank you.
I can answer that. So, part of Devin's Roland Foundation, his Roland grant, his Roland fellowship, is to visit other sites and to look to how our program should be advanced, grown, and changed. And he hasn't done that yet. So, that's one of the goals, and one of the reasons why he was awarded the fellowship. And that was also the reason why we put it to the second phase.
So, it wasn't ripe?
Wasn't ready.
Yes.
What do you mean it wasn't ripe?
Ripe. It wasn't-
Right, yeah.
It wasn't ready.
So, it sounds like Devin's not ready.
It could evolve after he visits-
I would disagree with that. I think he's, he's more than ready to, to upgrade in the ways that I've described.
Well, Raoul, he's going to be going to Germany to study German methods. And he's also very concerned with this, this high school to CTE path. In fact, his goal for, again, I don't want to speak for him, but I believe the goal for the Raoul is to, is to develop that, a program to propose to the state legislature for creating that CTE in the high schools to the tech programs path. That doesn't have anything to do with the current need for our kids to advance their educations as quickly as possible.
Sorry, Ken. I'm feeling at a real deficit here. What is the intent of this program, right? So, I mean, is it, is it meant as a pathway to a career? Or is it, you know, I mean, if I'm going to be working in my garage, chances are I'm going to have an old blade, or I'm going to, you know what I mean? So, it's hard to say whether or not the investment is, is worth doing right now if the program is not intended to be like a career path. So, I, I'm just really feeling at a deficit with information here.
I think, one thing we're talking about-
Excuse me, Kevin, you haven't been recognized. I've heard, I've heard comments from several people saying that they desired more information, and that this motion, this proposal for a significant amount of money is being made at the, at the table today, but without some of the background consultation that's gone into preparing our facilities document with the budget. I'm wondering if we should perhaps table this and, and get some of that other information, either with Devin here, or, yes, Jean.
Just a clarification, if I may. When you say table this, the-
The motion.
Yeah, the request that we brought to you for the original 440,000 is, we are really hoping you can act on that part of it tonight-
Correct.
Because we need to start getting started on the projects, and to table that could delay us being able to complete them.
I don't-
200,000 additional.
I think the motion is, the motion is for the 200,000 additional. The motion is not on the-
No, the motion's now for 600,000 because of the first motion.
Oh, it is. Okay, I misunderstood. I misunderstood.
So, could we vote for the original and then vote-
Right now, what's in front of you is the 600. You'd have to vote it down and reintroduce the original.
So, if we voted it down, we could vote for the original-
Yes.
And then vote again for the, an additional 200,000.
You could. And you could also vote for, you could also ask for more information and have that vote at a different meeting. It's not, it's not all or nothing tonight for the additional 200,000. But we have projects lined up for the original 440 that can't start until you approve them.
Are you ready for the question? Oh, one more here.
If you vote for the 600,000, that money is set, set aside to be used for the proposal. If that money is not used, or is, let's say it comes in at 150,000, what would happen with anything that's not used? That goes back into the reserve fund?
Yes.
So, if we just find out that Mr. Capek can only do a portion of what we're funding, then whatever he doesn't use goes back into the, would go back into the reserve fund.
And what if the opposite is true, that it's not enough?
More money, then he would have-
I think it's-
Kevin, yes, you raised your hand.
Yeah, if your name read, I forgot.
Yes.
Yeah. So, I wanted to address your question about-
Through the chair, yes.
Right. I want to address his question about, about, about program. The first thing is that many of these kids have not done well. They're not intending to go to college or university. They're, they are ineligible, or, some of the younger kids won't be able to get into Stafford or Hanford. Some of them, for instance, the kids in the heavy equipment class, some of them are intending to go into that industry. Others may or may not, and they may wind up just being able to use a bulldozer in their backyard someday. So, there's, there's a variety of, of paths that, that kids can take from these things. One of my big concerns is that, that COVID has greatly demoralized our kids. And-
Are you answering his question?
Yes, I am. And that the, anything we can do to get them engaged is a positive thing. And I think it's going to stimulate them for greater learning in other ways as well, and, and to better behavior. So, I think this, all I can tell you is that there's a hunger for this kind of learning among these kids. And the seat, the, the high school to CTE program path needs to be reformed statewide. But I don't think we can afford to wait. We're going to lose our juniors. We're going to lose our sophomores unless we act. Thank you.
Well, I guess I would say that we also can't afford to spend money on a program that may still not meet their needs either, right? I mean, listen, I came from a tech background. That's what I do every day. This stuff, I mean, it sounds great. I, I just don't have, I mean, I would have to vote no on the whole expenditure, because I don't have enough information.
I want to clarify where we are from a parliamentary point of view.
Yes, Bill.
What's our status? We moved, we passed a motion, an amendment to the motion, which was to include the program, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, now we're looking at the main motion, which would include that program, which means, I'll move the questions. So.
Second. Question's been moved. Can we restate the question, please?
Don't you vote on-
Can we vote on moving it first?
Yes, you do.
Move the question.
Yeah.
All those in favor of moving the question?
I need a second.
Kevin did.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
All those in favor of moving the question?
Aye.
Opposed? Online, folks? Okay. I don't have the numbers, but it seems to, thank you.
Motion was made by Eric Larson, and seconded by Natalie. We seem to approve spending. So, I put the 640,000?
Yes.
Okay. 300 from the capillaries are fun to address the 22 summer projects as outlined in the request provided.
I don't think I seconded it.
You didn't?
You seconded the original.
The original motion.
The original motion. Yeah, okay.
Not the amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if I may, so, the motion that's in front of you now, I don't think it's the original people who have a name on it. It's the amendment people who added the 200,000, which made it now 640,000. So, the new motion is an amended motion by Kevin, seconded by Eric, to approve 640,000, blah, 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 from the reserve fund.
And the original motion disappears?
Right.
Okay.
The amended motion replaces it.
Okay.
The amended motion includes it and replaces it.
Correct.
But his, his amended motion did not have the total.
He added 200,000 to the earlier motion.
You could say 640.
No, he added 200-
Adds up to 640.
To the existing 440.
Right. So, now, it's a whole new motion that I think still goes back to Kevin and Eric, that now is a 640,000, which includes the original 440 plus the amended 200 addition. We can clean out, you know, but, but I, I don't, I mean, Natalie's point is that she doesn't want to make a $640,000 motion.
Got you. Okay.
So, we're ready, we, we're ready for the vote.
You're ready for the motion now?
On the 600,000.
On the 640,000 dollars.
640,300 from the reserve fund.
All those in favor, say aye, or signal.
Aye.
Hold on. One, two, three. One, two, three, four. Online, Becky, five. Okay, I see five.
All those opposed, signify so.
One, two, three, four, five. Barbara, what are you? Oh, six.
So, the motion is defeated.
The motion's defeated.
And the floor is now open.
The floor is now open. What's your pleasure?
I move to vote for the original motion.
So, you're calling the motion on the original 440?
Yes.
Second. Who seconded?
Is it for this whole, is it for this whole fund request?
For the original fund request.
For the original fund request. So, there's a motion on the floor for the original fund request as presented. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And all those opposed?
One, two, three.
It is, the facilities fund request as presented has passed.
Good.
So.
So, you have a number of coaches ready to do a presentation once again.
I think, given the time of the hour, I would like to suggest that we push the presentation to the June 15 meeting.
Wait a second. Wait, wait, wait.
I'm not doing that?
No, please. You can postpone your end of year financial review to the June 1 meeting.
A second.
But you still have time for presentations. So, we have people who are here and waiting to present at your request, which-
Oh, the year-end financial review?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I misread that.
Yeah. That can be postponed to June 2, your June 2 meeting. But a tech integration and equity and diversity could present. You still, it's only 7:20.
We have to postpone the board, review of the board annual work plan as well.
Correct.
Yeah, maybe. We'll, we'll see if we get through the presentations. Do we have consensus that we can push the end of the year financial review to the 15th? Any objection? We have consensus on that. So, we'd like to go, thank you for waiting, folks, to give us the presentations.
I guess the first one on our agenda would be the tech integration presentation, relevant topic.
And Max and Susan, you have permission to share. It should be open for you, if you, if you're sure.
Thanks. I'll go ahead and try to start sharing right now. Actually, Jean, it says host disabled participants' screen sharing.
Oh, that's so mean.
No, you can.
There you go.
That's right.
And Susan, we can see your screen now.
Great. I just meant to pull present notes, so is that true too, Steph?
Yes, we can see it.
Perfect, thank you. So, we really appreciate having a few minutes of your time just to update you on technology integration and our roles as coaches this year, and our focus and our goal. We're going to just review a little bit of how we do our work with teachers, give you some examples, and then share some goals for us for next year. So, let's start off by just reminding us that our task when we work with educators is to stay focused on technology as a tool of instruction. We're always tied on student work regarding words that are written in the book. And so, engaging teachers through coaching and professional development so that they can keep that focus specifically on learning and engagement. can keep that focus specifically on learning and engagement in the classroom. So one thing I just briefly want to share with you is that Max and I have both been trained in this framework, it's called the T-PACK framework. Can we take just a minute to unpack it so that you can understand the work that we do with teachers and it's always focused on this? So we've got this sort of Venn diagram of three circles that inter, interact, and I'll just again briefly give you what you're looking at here. Teachers in the, tend to be in the experts in the content knowledge, so if you're looking at that blue circle, they come to something where they are really engaged in a target for, for learning for students. So for instance, if you think about a sixth grade science teacher, she might be really invested in having kids learn about invasive species and what that's going to do to lake Champlain. So that's the content that she's focused on. The yellow circle is how she's going to get the learners to get, to understand that knowledge deeply. So what are the kind of moves that she's going to make where kids are going to collaborate in small groups, are they going to connect with an expert up in the field? So teachers come to us with that intersection, but we can help them with this, to think about how the technology that they select is really intentional to get at that content knowledge and that pedagogy at the, the most efficient and the most engaging way. So Max and I always enter kind of thinking through this lens, if you will, when we're trying to support teachers to think about adopting technology. It's never really about just for, for just simple engagement, it's always about that intersection of learning. Max, do you want to go ahead and, and start with some of these examples?
Yeah, so one of the things that we feel is really important is to engage our community, engage our families. We did host a few different family engagement nights around digital citizenship at the different elementary schools, where we had parents come and we got to talk with them about the learning that's happening in the schools, about things like digital citizenship, about the technology tools, about the curriculum that students are learning in schools, and how we're working with teachers, with librarians on that. We have done a lot of collaboration across the district with all our librarians, so that's assisting librarians, coding lessons for students. It's really piloting programs with our librarians, trying new technologies, trying new software programs with librarians, with the classes that they teach, kind of to see the feasibility of those programs prior to deploying it with full staff. And really working with librarians as developing those best practices around technology integration within the individual schools, relying on their expert opinions and knowledge of their own schools.
Another focus for us, in addition to that T-PACK framework, is to be able to meet the goal on one of the district initiatives around helping teachers design learning opportunities through this lens of this universal design for learning. So really, that a shortcut for that, what we're talking about with this is that we want to remove barriers for access to, to learning for all of our diverse students. And that doesn't mean just in terms of special education, it's in a general education realm as well. So what does it look like when a teacher can design a learning opportunity knowing that she can have multiple means of, of representation of the, the kind of content knowledge that she's trying to share? So for instance, different levels of text for students to read, but in addition to that, she might want to bring in infographics or podcasts or other short videos so that students can engage with that, all the different content, but do so in a multimodal way so that they're not only just reading, but they're listening and they might even be doing some simulations. So we can help teachers design so that there's more access points and readiness for their learners. And that, that, that also includes things like the functionality that are on the Chromebooks all students have, one-to-one, that there's speech to text that can just open up space for a student. And so again, that science teacher was really interested in knowing what the student knows about invasive species, and that student is having trouble typing, she might find a different way for that, that student to be able to reveal what that student knows without, again, removing that barrier because it's not about their typing skills, it's about making visible what the student knows. So we come at everything we do in terms of our coaching through this universal design framework. Now we're just going to tell you a couple of quick examples that we've had. I tend to work with the seven through 12 folks and Max's case sticks. When we work with teachers, I'll just give a quick example. Molly Nica, in her Spanish class, is really interested in fluency for students, and so we worked with her to get IAs and find students to practice fluency. Super engaging for kids, and it was again giving them, bumped up that idea of being able to practice fluency. We tend to recommend a lot of software that sometimes gets blocked in the district, and so, for instance, a math interventionist wanted to do some more practice with students so we could help find an app that was actually a piece of the way to apply to our software policies. A third example is working with a health teacher in a health class. She tended to use her textbook offering, and she was really trying to find all the ways for students to engage, so that's a really great targeted video for her to be able to share for the students and be able to project. So it's those kinds of examples that I'm going to share.
And just to also briefly share about some of the work going on at the elementary schools, you know, working with sixth grade classes on, again, multimedia, EdPuzzle is a really great tool, a social studies lesson that embeds questions within a video, utilizing programs out there such as Class Doge to really work on that PBIS within schools, within the classroom. And just today I was working with the second grade teachers that now should be on a book creator project that they're going to be doing next week with all of their students.
Couple of quick examples of working directly with students, again, at the high school. One of the things we get to do as coaches is we can co-plan and co-teach with the educators invited us in. So Sarah Bowes, the communications class, had me come in to look at some technology-related job skills as the students were building resumes. But we could also talk about how when we submit a resume, there's some technologies that companies use that sorts them, and so what kind of keywords can students put into their resumes so that they actually have a better chance of, of getting hired, an example like that. I've been lucky enough to work with a few students and with a couple of teachers around the podcasting club at Otter Valley where students, you know, practice integrating skills and then they get a chance to use industry-recognized software to be able to edit that and then tell stories of really good things that are happening in the school.
Yeah, and I've been fortunate enough to work with our sixth grade at Lester. Earlier this year, they went to Starbase, so working with them on creating videos where they got to demonstrate the learning that they did, and really, they got to be the creators of the technology, they got to be creators of the media that they were using. And we've also been working on forming student sounding boards at each school so we can get, really hear the student voices around technology, around how it's being used in the school, to work with them and see what would best help our students learn. And we've recently worked with all the parent educators across our whole district, really supporting them on using assistive technologies, supporting them in working that one-on-one with our students. Just today I worked with a parent educator and a student, like Susan mentioned earlier, the speech to text feature that our Chromebooks have, that our students have. I worked, this student was recently given access to this by his teacher for all assignments that he does, so working with the parent educator to learn how to best support this student in using this technology.
And finally, we have some goals for next year. We're really excited to be able to provide a little bit more clarity to each of the administrative teams in schools on what we can do for professional development that goes beyond just the one-time coaching. Professional development, leadership, quality, and support. So we've got a menu of offers there that we'll be sharing. Hi, my team. The former technology integration committee is in the district school. Really, there were sort of a bit of bias in reports, but it's sort of a media mapping that we look, what's real for the parent educators and what works, and then we can assess the progress. We want to increase effective technologies in all of the schools, and so if you're going to that universal design for learning, how to fill out the personal development for next year's goals. So the teachers will see that information coming and support. And then we, we wrote a little bit of this, so we prepared a good outline and we made, which we will choose to use for some IT hardware, we support for that, and the curricular goals that we have. So that's what we have. We know that we're looking at a bit of time, so if there are any questions or how to take them or if we want to discuss.
Thank you.
A question?
What was the turnout like at the digital night with the parents?
Yeah, so it really varied by school. We didn't have as great a turnout as we would have liked, but that is something that we are going to continue to grow for next year.
And just to follow up, is that, is this the first year you've done that? Had that open house?
This is both Susan and my first year in the district.
It's first year for the position in the district.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you both very much.
I have more questions if nobody else does. This is fascinating to me. I have more questions if no one else does, I'm sorry. What was I looking at? Are you able to integrate the smartphones in your programs? I mean, I know every kid carries a phone around now, and I'm just wondering how much they're being taught how to use them to their advantage as opposed to just their entertainment?
It's a great question. I know that in the middle school, the policy is that they're not allowed to use their cell phones because of distractions from the educational kind of focus. And then at the high school, it does vary, there are some teachers certainly ask students, especially for the ones who are beginning to easily catch or digest this, use the apps on the phone to be able to, to work that way. And again, it's always that, that balance with that teaching, right, about is this distracting, or is this for educational use? And if one of them is saying nothing, then that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Joe has a question.
Joe?
Yeah, perhaps a little offbeat here, is how do you assure that you have good comprehensive curriculum when you're working with technology and integrating it?
Yeah, that, you can go, Susan.
I think I, what I would just say is that what we tend to do whenever we're planning as teachers is we look at what the learning target is going to be, there's a real clarity about what the end goal is. And so every time I'm starting a coaching session, I ask that, and that's always the forward way to look at that. Then we look at the assessment, what would it look like if somebody was successful? And from those two lenses, we can, let's say, well, what's kind of, what's the technology that's going to get you there?
Yeah, I was just going to add, it kind of goes back to that framework that we looked at the beginning, right? Technology is a piece of that puzzle, but it is the content as well, it is the pedagogical skills and knowledge that our teachers have as well. So it's really, how can we bring that all together?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. The, the concept that you spoke of, the universal design, which really helps facilitate a variety of access points for, or addresses different learning styles and that sort of thing. In terms of professional development, how many teachers are being reached or, in terms of professional development, is this part of a new pedagogy that is across our district at all levels, using this notion of universal design?
I can jump in. I can jump in, I see the coach is looking at me because they're, who's going to jump in? Yeah, so kind of generally speaking, it is something that we've been doing, we've been very intentional about. There's a good, there's a core group of administrators, coaches, teachers that are really digging into UDL this year. It definitely situates itself within all of our curriculum, all of our tiered systems and supports. For next year, the professional learning and professional development system is getting a revamp, and there will be three distinct strands that allows teachers not only to dig into it in those sessions, but regularly throughout the school year, monthly with coaches, with colleagues, to kind of reflect on what's working in their practice, what they want to shift. And UDL is a specific strand within it. So yeah, I think you'll, it, it's definitely a huge commitment, it's just best practice.
Yes.
So, you know, I, I think we'll start to see a lot more proficiency with it in the coming years.
Thank you. Natalie?
Is the integrative technology, is it a requirement of all teachers, or is it just voluntary right now in their curriculum?
So it is voluntary right now, but we have noticed, I mean, this has been a growing trend in education. For years, this pushed for more technology in the classrooms, and obviously COVID has shown us just how integral technology can be in our classrooms and the power that it has. So it's, it's definitely something that teachers are desiring, students are desiring, so yeah.
Yeah, and I just, I would just add, reaching out to a tech integration coach is optional, but integrating technology into your practice is not, right? We have tech standards. We, you know, Jean has shared with all teachers and administrators regularly using Google Classroom, even if all of your students are in the building, is a requirement, right? So using technology both as a tool and also as a way to supplement your instruction and current targets isn't an option.
Any other questions? Well, thank you both very much. That was very informative.
Thanks for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Susanna, you're up.
Ready, I'm going to take sharing my screen with you all. Let's see. Okay. Great. So, hi, everyone, thank you for your time tonight. I know it's late in the, in the session. My goal is to bring you an overarching snapshot of some of the issues of educational equity and been unearthing this year, as well as some updates about work that's underway to become a more equitable SU for all of our students. First, I think it's useful to be precise about what is meant about the term educational equity. Words like equity have taken on all right meanings and interpretations in the zeitgeist, and in some ways have, you know, become buzzword words. So I wanted to offer language form of this working definition of educational equity. This definition of educational equity was developed this year by RESU's Equity Committee, and it's a definition that borrows from the National Equity Project. So the, hopefully you can hear me, I just thought I broke.
Yeah, we can still hear you.
Just let me know if I need to repeat anything. Okay, great. So the definition, in RESU, educational equity means each child receives what they need to develop and thrive academically and socially. Our ongoing commitment to educational equity in RESU includes ensuring equally high outcomes for all participants in our educational system, removing the successes or failures that correlate with any social identifier, including but not limited to race, gender, socioeconomic status, inability and disability. It also includes interrupting inequitable practices, examining biases and creating inclusive multicultural school environments for adults and children, and discovering, celebrating and cultivating the unique gifts, talents and interests of each student. I also find whenever, you know, we are talking big picture equity, I think it's helpful to call forward these nine major social identities, which meaningfully shape the experiences and outcomes in our schools of, of all people and students. So I offer these here, race, ethnicity, age, gender, sexuality, ability and disability, socioeconomic status, religion and family structure, so that we're primed to view educational equity and its expansiveness as something that's intersectional and fairly complex. And tonight, the presentation that I have prepared, prepared for you has two components, and the first is a brief snapshot of some issues of educational inequity that we're beginning to unearth in our schools. I have some powerful testimonials from students, which you will, you'll receive in your executive session, I believe.
I'll send them on.
Along with a handful of data points. Did you lose me?
No, you're good.
Okay, great. And some notes on some relevant policies. And, and it's really- And it's really important to know that the information I'm sharing tonight is not a comprehensive portrait of where we are and where we're going. And what I share will probably raise more questions than answers. And fortunately, a thorough analysis and report is currently underway with help from the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium. So as a board, you can expect a much more detailed update at the beginning of the next school year. And connected to that, I put this slide in here just to support you all in locating where we are in this moment at school system. The 2122 school year has been one that's been inquiry focused in RNSU. And next year, the focus will be reflecting on what we learned from the equity audit and moving from inquiry into reflection into thoughtful and purposeful planning and action. And I'm finding that I don't need to be gritty. I just wanted to include these reminders to us to set us up for success tonight. The student testimony and data that you'll engage with are tremendously powerful and even at times painful to read, at least that was my experience. And I am so grateful to the students who step forward to share their voices with us because ultimately, you know, they're the reason why we here and their voices will make us better. And I just have been reflecting on sharing this information with you all. And I know that when I feel overwhelmed by the grief and frustration around inequities and injustices that exist in our society, I can sometimes default to blaming a few people or groups for problems which are actually systemic in nature. So just a reminder for us, as, you know, we're humans, that we remember that the issues raised tonight can't be reduced to being the fault of one administrator or school. In general, I think blaming is a normal human response to dealing with challenging emotions, but in our case, it functions to hold us back from the work that needs to be done. So this is just a call in case it's useful for this group, which I know is useful for me, to remember that the issues are systemic in nature. They're reflective of local, state and national trends and that we need to assume shared responsibility for them. Seek systemic and just remember that this work is ongoing, unfinished and threaded throughout everything that we do. So the first snapshot I have for tonight is a summary of three major themes that came up in the testimonies that were identified by a group of students of color who stepped forward to share their testimonies, shared with you later tonight. And I would encourage you to read each of these statements by the students as they're far more powerful and informative than the summary. But the three themes that really rose to the surface in their statements were the use of racial, homophobic, transphobic and ableist slurs by the student body specifically at Otter Valley, adult responses to harassment and bias incidents, including distance or sometimes lack thereof, and curriculum issues around underrepresentation and/or misrepresentation of historically marginalized groups. So these students who have shared their voice have consented for you to read the statements as a board, but have not yet consented for them to be shared with a broader audience beyond the Otter Valley principles. So thank you in advance for keeping them within your group. I did meet with Jim Avery and Christine Everts to go over the testimonies together and plan to share them with Michael Ruffel and Patrick Binder as well, who have all been supportive of efforts to transform obese systems and culture. And as you read those, I just know that I'm here if you have any follow-up questions or concerns. The next few slides are a series of data points taken from Otter Valley, which point towards disproportionality and are out-of-school suspension rates, which is just one of many helpful indicators to begin looking at around educational equity to disproportionality across different social identifiers, which I've included here. So if we look at this chart, we see that students with an IEP have 2.13 times the risk of receiving at least one out-of-school suspension as all other students. Students with an IEP account for 14% of the school's total enrollment and represent a quarter of all students receiving out-of-school suspensions.
Susannah, is it possible...
Across different...
Susannah, is it possible to make the slide bigger?
I wonder...
I don't know if it is, and we'll share this later, but...
Does that help what I just did on...
It did help.
My screen?
Yeah, it did.
Okay, I can, okay. How is that? Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, awesome. I have my notes open and so I have part of that box minimized, but that should be good. Okay. So I'll move now to the next slide. This is still around overrepresentation and out-of-school suspensions at Otter Valley. Students identified as male account for 53% of the school's total enrollment and represent 63% of all students receiving out-of-school suspensions. And students identified as black and African-American have 1.84 times the risk of receiving at least one out-of-school suspension as all other students. Said another way, black and African-American students account for 3% of the school's total enrollment and represent 6% of all students receiving out-of-school suspensions. Having introduced these examples of disproportionate overrepresentation in our out-of-school suspension rates, it's really important for us as we read the data to be mindful to interpret it carefully and just remember that when we see patterns by group, they're because of systems and not people. And one example of this is when we're interpreting our suspension data, when it's disaggregated by race. This slide comes from PBIS, which is the group which runs SWISS, which is where we house this data and collect this data on our out-of-school suspensions. And this is reflective of national research out of the Equity Project in Indiana University. But it causes a disproportionality in suspensions of color. Some folks make the connection between poverty and out-of-school suspensions, and poverty does affect students of color in our country disproportionately. However, we know that when controlling for poverty, poverty alone does not fully explain disproportionate outcomes for students of color. That race is also a factor that needs to be explored. And we know that in our school systems, unequal educational opportunity can be a cause of disproportionality in suspension data. Students of color are often limited in work facilities and inadequate resources are often underrepresented in curriculum and see fewer highly qualified teachers. And when it comes to the behaviors themselves that are leading to the discipline referrals, though students of color are disciplined at a higher rate, no evidence exists that suggests that this disparity is due to a higher rate of misbehavior by students of color. Black students are punished more severely for less serious and more subjective behaviors. So this is just a slide I included to remember that we have so many different variables and factors to consider that it's helpful to look at the graphs that I'm showing you as question askers rather than jumping to conclusions around what they mean. Here is one more disproportionality from our Panorama survey. Students took twice this year at Otter Valley. This graph indicates that students in grades six through 12 in RNSU, so a little bit beyond Otter Valley only, took this survey approximately half of the students in those grades took the survey. This is important information. This is not a poll of all of the students in grade six to 12 we have, but of the students who did, students who received free or reduced-priced lunch responded less favorably to questions about their self-efficacy, which is their belief that they can be successful on a given task than all other students. So again, there's a lot for us to look at here. Really important questions are raised. And I think as we approach this equity audit, it's helpful to sort of prepare ourselves for the types of things that we might see. However, I think we have a long way to go in understanding the implications and the causes behind some of this reality. And finally, I want to show these three relevant policies, which outline our legal responsibilities to working diligently towards equitable education for all students. For the sake of the time we have, I won't summarize them, but they are linked here and I'd be happy to answer questions about them in the future. And this presentation is really dedicated to updating you on some of the work we've moved forward this year. I realize that I'm going really fast, so yeah. If I leave anything to be desired, now that you can hook me another time. The, as I mentioned, we're doing this equity audit. The goal of it is to identify areas of strength and actionable opportunities for growth regarding RNSU's commitment to educational equity. In the fall and winter of this year, the consortium facilitated focus groups and administered climate surveys to get insight from students, staff and families. Right now, they're in the process of analyzing our quantitative data for disproportionality to what I just shared with you. They'll be looking at different indicators from our out-of-school suspension rates, grades in core classes, retention and promotion rates, et cetera. And where they can, where it's possible and the data allows, they'll disaggregate it according to social identifiers like race and ethnicity, IEP status, brand, reduced-price lunch eligibility and gender. And they will also begin a review of sums and procedures, which are to be determined. And over the summer, we will receive a report of their findings and eventually have some recommendations from them, which can inform our multi-year equity plan. And we have also had monthly virtual meetings of the RNSU Equity Committee this year. Some of the work includes doing personal reflection to build up individual self-awareness and leadership capacity for members of the committee. We developed shared language like the definition I shared with you earlier. We reviewed the equity policy and identified areas for growth in alignment with the policy and brainstormed and provided feedback on a range of topics, hiring practices and culturally responsive family engagement, empowering students as change agents and needs-based professional development for educators. And there are growth areas for sure in all of this work. As far as the Equity Committee is concerned, I think we want to form a committee that is diverse and representative of the entire RNSU community, especially centering student voice. The two incredible young people you have in the room with you have stepped up and participated in our Equity Committee so far this year, but we want a lot more students at the table, so to speak. And we also want to share our breakout with the broader community on our conversation more often. And finally, we have an exciting opportunity, a mini-grant from the SBA to support a literacy project aimed at developing anti-bias literacy curriculum for pre-K through sixth classrooms. So stay tuned on that. There'll be a lot more information coming out shortly, but that is an exciting opportunity to support students and teachers in thinking about curriculum with an anti-bias, anti-racist lens and just to engage our community with a concrete tool to help teachers engage students around topics of identity, diversity and inclusion. And this is a list of ongoing work. We've been doing some building-based workshops this year focused on inclusive classroom practices. As Susan mentioned earlier in her presentation alongside Max, we're building a professional learning pathway for teachers next year, and the focus is inclusive teaching and learning. So underneath that umbrella will be topics like universal design for learning, trauma-informed instructional prep, social emotional learning and identity-conscious teaching and learning, including, excuse me, data literacy tools for teachers. And you'll see here just some other initiatives we put forward, work with administrators trying to enhance access to families and community members through Let's Talk so that they can have just additional channels of communication and support available to them, especially around issues of equity and bias incidents. And then we have some exciting developments as far as supporting our LGBTQ students with Outright Vermont and our Otter Alliance space, which has started at Otter Valley this year. And are looking forward to a revamped partnership with Upr learning to empower students as change agents next year. So please tune on all of this stuff. Happy to share more and more depth without any and all. And in general, you know, these are positive developments and we know that there's a lot more work to be done, which will be dynamic thing. And your support as a board and partnering with RNSU in this work is hugely essential piece of this journey. So thank you for your time and just stay tuned for the kind of report back on that equity audit.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
It is neat, so happy to come. Thank you. If there's time for questions, happy to take any, but also happy to come back or field them over email, et cetera.
Well, it's eight o'clock. I have a couple of quick questions. Shall we give ourselves a few more minutes?
Yes, please.
Okay.
If I could bear the forgiveness of the chair, I will be leaving not too much longer in order to go get married.
I love that.
You're not getting married until Sunday.
I realize that's a news, but I am limited in the time I have for you tonight.
Ten minutes.
I can do that.
We're going to extend ten minutes, so we'll take a couple of questions. Kevin, you have one.
Yeah, you mentioned a committee. Does our board have membership on that committee? What is the committee who's on it?
Yes, so this has a history that predates my own in RNSU, so Kristen, feel free to jump in with anything. I ask for more participation on this committee, the better. I think in a future iteration, in addition to engaging far more students, all stakeholders of RNSU are welcome to the table.
You also have some community members.
Yeah, we do have parents. Right now, the composition of the committee is several staff and educators, some students and parents and community members. But absolutely, the board members are welcome and encouraged to participate.
Another very quick question. Anybody, just a second, Kevin. Anybody else have a question? And then I'll come back. Okay. Jill?
Just very quickly, a comment is, don't take it on yourself of the responsibility for solving all of this problem. I mean, you recognize it and you are working on it, but it's a social issue and the reasons for it are socio-economically based and community-based and we cannot automatically wave a magic wand and make it go away. As a society, we've known these discrepancies for at least 65 years and expecting the schools to resolve them. Well, it's going to take more than that. And if you can be the voices to the outside as well as the inside, please do so. But don't think that it's all your problem and all of your problem to resolve.
Thank you for that. And I couldn't agree, don't view it. And part of my feeling about embracing the work as unfinished is knowing that this work is systemic, it's societal, far beyond any individual. And we have to be planful and thoughtful about it and work hard together. So I think it's a yes and to that. I couldn't agree with you more that these are big societal issues.
Yes, and then we'll get to Kevin's other question.
I saw the data points for a lot of that information were based on Otter Valley. And there was one slide with the sixth grade included. Are you, is the group working at all with the elementary schools to find out the same? Was that, were the elementary schools polled for similar results or is it mostly just coming out of Otter Valley?
Yes, so the information and the graphs I shared with you are pulled from Otter Valley mostly because at the data point of out-of-school suspensions is most relevant to Otter Valley. It's happening far less for our elementary schools. However, the audit, which is separate from what I shared with you, is looking comprehensively at all of our schools.
Okay, great. Kevin?
Yeah, it's, thank you. This is, there are two bullet points that, out of all the many that came up that I wanted to ask. The very first one was regarding equality of outcomes. And then, later on the presentation, we had a bullet point that said 63% of students suspended for fighting, I believe, were male. Are we looking for an outcome where 50% of the suspensions are for girls and were slightly below 50% for both, and that between girls, boys and transgender students, we have equal suspensions for fighting?
So, the goal obviously is zero suspensions. But if you look back at the definition of educational equity, a huge part of it is eliminating predictability. So, right now, it is predictable that if you identify as male, you are more likely to be suspended. We want to reduce predictability so that you cannot predict whether or not someone is going to be suspended based on any part of their social identity. So, hopefully that answers your question, not striving for, you know, for out-of-school suspension whatsoever.
Chris, oh, one second. Go ahead.
I just have one question. Do you know how that data compares historically to, say, 20 years ago, of 63% of males being suspended versus?
No, not off the top of my head. That's a great question, and I can absolutely look that up. 20 years ago, I haven't taken the time to look into that kind of analysis, but that would be interesting to find out.
Natalie?
I just have a comment. You know, we use the word suspension. Suspension, the way it was used 30 years ago may be different than the way we use suspension now, and I would hope that we are moving away from suspension and finding other means such as, you know, education and therapy or other ways to help the students, because the suspension is just a symptom of the problem, and it doesn't really help the problem at all by making the kid stay out of school. He's not learning anything. So, what can we do differently? So, just that comment about suspension in general.
That's a really important consideration, and we also know that suspensions, for, in particular for students of color, are directly correlated with their presence in the criminal jail system. And so, I think that your point is extremely well-taken. I think as we continue to unearth these things and move into planning and, you know, action, I think that conversation around why are we suspending students, what's the purpose, and is it needing our goals and their needs, is one that's definitely going to be examined.
Kristen, do you have any closing comments as we run out of time? Couple of minutes.
No, I just, these coaches are fantastic. I couldn't be more proud of the team that I work with and how they support the entire system. I think this is, you know, it was just a snapshot, like a little snippet of what they do to support schools and teachers, administrators and students. So, you know, I look forward to having both of, both groups come back in the future. And definitely, as Susanna had mentioned, we are really interested to see, you know, what the Equity Audit shows for us. We are very aware, because Susanna was able to pull a lot of data points, that we already know there's a lot we need to work on, but we are feeling really ready to kind of dig into some of these things for next year.
Susanna, could you review the confidentiality reminder that you gave us at the beginning, please?
Yes, thank you. I'd be happy to. I would just appreciate honoring the students who stepped forward. Just as you reviewed the executive session materials with their testimonies that remain, I'm agreeing with a whole with a lot of groups that I facilitate, is what is learned here can leave here, but what is said here stays here. And I think that that is the spirit in which you can receive these statements. Feel free to let their testimonies change you and shape your perspectives, and then feel free to share those perspectives with others. As far as, please do not share those beyond.
Okay, thank you. We're at our 8:10, and Jeanie's got to go get married. Second. So- Just review the work plan. Was that an-
That was a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn? All those in favor?